Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting of April 23rd. Excuse me, I'm gonna have to keep the gallery really quiet because of our mics and our captioner needs to be able to hear so she can caption our broadcast properly, so I really appreciate. If you got a chat, feel free to walk outside because it becomes very difficult for the people watching at home. We'll start off, before we get to the agenda, we do have a public hearing again. The public hearing, as I mentioned, for those of you that came in late, you'll have three minutes to testify on the first round. Your testimony, once you're done, once we get through the entire list of speakers, we'll open it up for a second round if anyone needs it. And just so that you know, the council members are not allowed to ask questions or have a discussion at a public hearing. This is for us to listen to each and every one of you. With that, clerk, can you read the notice for the public hearing, please?
Notice is hereby given that the Kauai County Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. or soon thereafter in the historic county building, 4396 Wright Street, on bill number 2951, a bill for ordinance amending Chapter 8, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended relating to commercial use of park facilities. This bill proposes to amend Chapter 8, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended, including KCC Sections 8-1.5, 8-2.4, 8-29.5, and 8-6.3, to allow farmers and artisan markets within state and county park areas and community use facilities; two, to allow commercial concessions associated with park events such as athletic games or meets, fairs, and concerts within state and county park areas; and three, make course bonding technical documentation and cross-reference amendments. This bill also states the requirements of Chapter 20, Article 5, and Chapter 23, Article 3, apply to new uses established by this bill. Chair, we do have many people registered to speak.
Members, we did 13 written testimonies. Is there any Zoom or remote testimony? Let's start with the first registered speaker.
The first speaker is Steve Fraley, followed by Billy Carter.
So if you could just start by stating your name for the record for our captioner, and then you can proceed.
My name is Steve Fraley. There, it was on, okay. My name is Steve Fraley, and aloha. Many of you I've met before over the years. I'm here today on behalf in support of Bill 2951. I'm a certified organic farmer from Mollua. My wife and I moved here in 1982, have three kids, they're all born on our farm. We have, for a 70-acre certified organic farm now, we do about 18 acres of noni. And over the years, we developed different value-added products that we process. We grow, pick, and process noni on our farm under Sunrise Organic Farms. And, oops, I forgot. And so, we develop value-added products that we grow, pick, and process and make products out of noni that we do locally through stores, and we do it online. We have about $15,000, $15,000 lines online that we do our noni, we do lotions that we We found, we used to go to many, many trade shows in the mainland, but we found the farmers' markets are actually the best way of meeting new clients that purchase later on from our website. The Hawaii Visitors Bureau, many years ago, did a survey that showed that 80% of the tourists visiting Hawaii are looking to purchase products made in Hawaii. So it's a very good venue for us to meet clients for the future. They can meet our family, they can sample the products, they can purchase there, they go home, and then they can purchase in the future from our website. So that's what we've been doing for many, many years. Some of our best long-term clients are people that we met at the farmers' markets that purchased for 15, 20 years from our website. So pre-COVID, we attended nine farmers' markets islandwide. During COVID, they closed. And that's when it became very apparent to us, the value of the farmers' markets to our website. And so after COVID went away, we visited farmers' markets in Kapaa, Kilauea, Hanalei, and Princeville, looking to join one market. We picked the Princeville Market because of the quality of the market, the quality of the vendors, the balance between farmers and artisans, and the management of it. And since we've done that, now we have regained our 15,000, 1,000 clients online because of attending the farmers' markets. So I highly hope you all support this bill because it definitely supports local families and businesses here on Kauai that are trying to start family-run businesses. And farmers' markets are a great way of doing that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Billy Carter, followed by Holden Hansen.
Morning, council. My name is Billy Carter. I own Kauai Gourmet Nuts. I'm here speaking in support of Bill 2951. I wanted to address some concerns I've heard from community members who might not be in support of the bill, specifically saying that there aren't enough restrictions, and they're afraid that it's going to allow for a situation like Tijuana or Bali where people are just reselling trinkets and people can come and set up and make easy money out here and kind of take advantage. My response to that is, first off, by virtue of us having this meeting, we know that the markets that are in question are already operating kind of unregulated by the county. These are being regulated by the market managers, the organizations that host the markets, and the communities around the markets that might have concerns. And most importantly, by our fellow vendors. There's no easy money to make at a farmer's market. A two-and-a-half-hour market might mean an eight-hour day for most of the vendors. You load a full van or a full truck with all of your stuff. You got a 50, 60, 70-pound pop-up tent. All these things take a lot of time. You gotta get up at like 6:00 in the morning, load all your things into your vehicle, get to the market, unload everything, set up. You know, this isn't easy money. You're not just throwing a table up with trinkets on it. And if a hard-working farmer, artisan, or crafter sees another vendor that maybe is just selling some trinket that they bought online or brought in from China to resell, we're gonna have something to say about that because we worked hard to get there. There's over 50 vendors on a waitlist before the Princeville Market was shut down. And if those 50 vendors are sitting there waiting for their chance to have their handcrafted local goods represented at a market, who's gonna let some guy come in and start selling keychains they got, you know? We're regulating that ourselves already, and we appreciate that the council is putting forth this bill with further restrictions and regulations. So there really is no fear. You know, look around. Do we see Tijuana or Bali on Kauai already? We don't see that, and we're not going to see that because this bill just furthers the regulations and restrictions. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Holden Hansen, followed by Lisa Hansen.
Hi, my name is Holden Hansen, and I'm 14-years-old. I am a vendor at the farmers' market, and my family sells embroidered patch hats. I support bill number 2951. Me and my 11-year-old sister spend a bit of our week preparing for the farmers' market. We set up each time, count our inventory, manage our sales, and talk to all the people who come to our booths. I've learned a chat from people who come all the way from around the world and visit our market, and I enjoyed being at the market a lot. I hope there can be a peaceful resolution as I'm ready to get back to work soon and keep on selling hats. Paulo, Pedro, Julio, Ana, Julio.
What was your first name again?
Holden Hansen.
Holden, thank you.
Lisa Hansen, followed by Opender Dell.
Good morning. I hope I can be as eloquent as my son, but my name is Lisa Hansen, and I support Bill 2951. Our family owns Uncle Rainbow's embroidered patch hats that I'm wearing. My husband creates, hand-draws each design, and we hand-press each patch. My kids are fortunate enough to have the opportunity to run a young entrepreneur's booth over the last 18 months. They've received an education that is so invaluable that I could never pay for. I owe a debt of gratitude to the market and to Desiree. Additionally, I'm a concierge at the One Hotel Hanalei Bay. I speak to hundreds of guests weekly. Often, there's guests that are looking for a recommendation that encapsulates culture, local food, music, community, and how to support small businesses while they're here on vacation on our island. My answer is always the same: Please take a walk down in the Princeville Farmers' Market. It'd be a detriment to keep our market shut down. I really hope we can come up with a solution that works for the community. Thank you.
Opender Dell, followed by Lana Bilbo.
This is my husband, Anthony Payden. He's here for support because I'm not very good at speaking.
Your phone goes off, you gotta bite. You gotta make soup for the council manager. Please silence all headphones.
My name is Opender Dell, now Opender Payden. He's here for support because I'm nervous about talking in front of people. I support Bill 2951. Our business is called Shakti Indian Cuisine. We do catering, and we do these markets all over the island. And we provide healthy Indian cuisine. We have samosas, breakfast samosas. The value of this market is so much more. It's a community, it's a family, it's ohana, and the way that everybody supports each other is invaluable. We get as many of our products, our produce, from the market vendors, so our ingredients are also sourced from as many of the, as we can. And the market supports a lot of families, and it's one of our main markets that we've been doing. And it's a great way for us to introduce the cuisine to people from all over the world, including locals that have never had Indian food before, and there's something priceless about that for my heart, for them to experience the food that they've never had before. And I feel like, yeah, the support in the main market, everything that Desiree's done, and I feel like it really helps the community come together. And it's way more than just, it's family, is the best way that I can put it. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Anna Bilbo, followed by Lauren Taylor-Davis.
My name is Lana Bilbo. I'm born and raised in Waialua on Kauai. I support Bill 2951. I'm not a vendor, I'm just a resident of Kauai, and I'm really glad to see the parks used this way. They sit empty so often. I've heard there's a concern with like overuse of the parks, like it's like kids' soccer practices and these amazing markets that allow and draw in people from all over our community to actually be using the parks and to be using the facilities that the taxpayers are paying for. I have friends and family that rely on these markets for income. I also work in local food and know that finding venues for local producers and farmers to sell things can be really difficult. Like, we don't have a centralized place or a ton of opportunities for people to do this. And so every single one of these opportunities is invaluable for our local business owners and our local entrepreneurs. I was really disappointed to see this market get shut down in the long run, especially after the enormous community support that came out to try and keep it open, and I really hope that this bill allows them to reopen. I think that like, it's not like a secret that our economy on this island is a little messed up and it's a little bit skewed. Like, we talk about, you know, Uncle's talking about the trinkets that people won't be, like, they're worried about selling them. Like, we have a ton of businesses with storefronts that sell those kinds of trinkets. And like, but the people that are hand-crafting goods made with aloha, made with local products, can only get into these markets. Like, this is the most economically reliable way that they have to sell their products. And so I really think that you should take into consideration that the concerns about trinkets and stuff, those are being lived out somewhere else. Markets here are really high-quality products that are made on Kauai, and they need a venue to be able to sell them. So I'm really proud of my community for finding these kinds of opportunities and making them for themselves when they're not being provided, and for doing things like coming up with these markets. And I hope that you guys can support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Taylor-Davis, followed by Kaylee Nakamura.
Hi, my name is Lauren Taylor-Davis, and I'm an artist and business owner at the Princeville Farmers and Artists Market. I was born, raised in Kilauea, and I'm a graduate of Kapaa High School. When I graduated high school, there weren't any opportunities here in creative careers. I chose to leave Kauai, as many young people do, and I lived on the mainland for 13 years to pursue an education and become a graphic artist. I moved home eight years ago to be back with my family, and I joined the market circuit. I could have never dreamed of making a living as an artist here at home, but these markets have made that dream possible. These markets give opportunities to kids like me who are from here, who grew up here, and want creative opportunities here at home. I hope I can tell my nieces and nephews that when they graduate college, they can come back home to Kauai because there are amazing opportunities here to thrive as an artist or a business owner at markets like this one. Thank you all so much for your time. I support Bill 2951. And lastly, here is a piece of my art that I created for my business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kaylee Nakamura, followed by Linda Yoshi.
Good morning. My name is Kaylee Nakamura, and my business is Kauai Ocean Jewels. So I started by collecting sea glass and trash off the beach, making jewelry out of that. And my father has always made traditional puka shell necklaces since the late 60s, so I grew up kind of with art. I was a vendor at the Princeville Farmers' Market. I've been doing jewelry for over seven years now, and farmers' markets have been what sustained my business. Meeting people and customers and having them buy from you directly is probably the most important thing for small businesses. I get asked, eight out of 10 people ask me, "Do you make this jewelry? Do you make your product?" It's the number-one question I get asked. And so I think having that face-to-face is very important for people, especially in this time of buying online, buying from China, buying cheap. And that especially does kind of play into the role of why it is so hard for small businesses to get their art into stores, because they are all competed by cheaper, faster-made items. So I find it really important to have these spaces for artisans, have cultural, or have community spaces that the public can come out and enjoy these like vibrant and fun events. That's why I support Bill 2951. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Yoshi, followed by Colin Wilson.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking your time for us today. Yeah, I'm Linda Yoshi.
Can you state your name again?
Linda Yoshi E., a farmer from Aloa. Yeah, yeah, I came over here to just, even if I'm not feeling well, but, yeah, so, anyway, I can just let you know that if you please consider us to continue our farmers' market in Princeville. Yeah, because it's very nice and happy, it's not only for that, it's not only for famine for all of us, yeah? But we can serve the community and also the tourists that visiting us and whoever comes from all over the world, you know, that have a place for visitors. So they have a place to come and visit for market in Princeville. I used to go to the other side, you know, as far as Kilauea, but now I'm just staying on in the North Shore. Yeah, so anyway, I've been just selling all our fruits and vegetables over there, and we supply some of the stores, like tiny stores, papaya stores. Yeah, it used to be, we used to send to the mainland for only papayas, but because of the eniki, it was damaged, so we had to diversify, we had to plant different kinds. And now it's so hard to raise papaya, so we use different kinds, and so we can afford all different kind of fruits and vegetables. I used to be with vegetables too, but now because of the fruit, the fruit trees that we have are bearing fruit, so I'm just taking more in the fruit trees. And we're so happy that we can sell our products over here locally, yeah? And we used to supply Chinatown, but not anymore because we don't have enough, and enough for over here in Kauai. And we're just so glad that we have Princeville Market, and hopefully you can help us continue on that one. We have only a few hours to set it up in every week, so we try not to damage the place. And still, we can continue the community, like I said. And our family is very important, and we need these local fruits and vegetables, so we don't have to buy something else. It's very important, and we hope you can help us on this one. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Colin Wilson, followed by Spencer Mack. Colin Wilson, followed by Spencer Mack.
Morning, council chair, council members. For the record, Colin Wilson, I am also-
Stop, reset his time. Please silence your guys' phones. We only can eat so much soup. Okay, start over.
Good morning, council chair, council members. For the record, Colin Wilson, I am also a vendor at the Princeville Farmers Market. I nurture honeybees and sell honey at the market. I'll be very brief, I just want to support Arrow and Fern for recognizing there's a problem introducing this bill. It's not only for Princeville Market, it's for all the markets island-wide that are not in compliance, and that's a great job. It's helping the community, it's a win-win, not only for the farmers and artisans, it's a win for the local residents purchasing locally-made products and locally farmed and raised foods. The tourist is also beneficial for the tourists, and I just appreciate you folks hearing this bill. I want to thank Kaayna also in the Planning Department for working on the bill, bringing it to its final form. And again, it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you, all of you, for hearing this bill and supporting it, and I echo what everybody said so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Spencer Mack, followed by Desiree Hirani.
Good morning, and thank you for your time and attention. My name is Spencer Mack. I'm a farmer in Molua, where we do regenerative agriculture, growing primarily sugarcane and selling sugarcane juice and products at the market. Speaking as somebody who wants to learn how to live sustainably and in a way that is beneficial to the ecosystem and the people around me, the markets are a vital aspect where we can come together as a community, support people who are actually growing food locally, and keep the local economy, local relationships, strong, happy, and healthy. Starting a business on this island from scratch is extremely difficult. The amount of resources that you need, the limited spaces where you can set up, make it even harder. And the markets have been a blessing for somebody like me trying to start from the ground up and grow a local, completely island-sourced product. The island has been, the market's been a boon for me. It was such a gift, and I really felt it after it was taken away. And so I am extremely appreciative of all the effort that has gone into finding a way to make this work, so that we're supporting people who are genuinely local and who are trying to help the local economy and do things for the good of the island. And so really appreciate everybody who has put time and energy into this, and I really hope that we can make decisions that benefit local businesses, local people, and ultimately create a healthier, more sustainable economy for the sake of everybody here and the health of the island. And so thank you, everybody, as I know all of you put so much time into that. So thank you very much. I support Bill 2951, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Desiree Hirani, followed by Toni Cordas.
Aloha, and good morning. I am Desiree Hirani. I am the owner of Bloom &amp; Prosper, an organizer of the Princeville Farmers and Artists Market. And first of all, I would like to extend my heartfelt mahalo for you supporting us, listening to us, and taking the time to hear our needs. And a special thank you to Fern, who has, it's very hard to find someone who works for the people, who picks up a phone call and a text message immediately and takes your concerns as a priority. So I want to thank you so much for that. Today, I'm going to go by notes. Usually, I speak from my heart, but there are some things that I would like to say that are very important. As a creator here on the island, I'm an entrepreneur by heart, it's in my blood. My father is a farmer on Oahu, and I followed his footsteps to be a business owner for myself and to work for myself. I used to have a big business on Oahu, I moved here, and I was traveling every single week to Oahu to do business and to make an income. I have a child now. The farmers' market has allowed me to stop business, doing work there, and work full-time here. It works with my health limitations, as well as being able to be a present mother and stay home, working just one day a week. And that is the best life that I could live, working like that. I create pieces that take up to twenty hours of my work by hand for apparel that I create with vintage Hawaiian textiles. I would not be able to make a good income if I were to have to wholesale that in a store. It would not equate to, I would be making less than a minimum wage at that point. So I'm here in strong support of Bill 2951. While I understand that this bill is to protect existing markets across the island, the truth and the reality is that our market in Princeville was targeted and shut down because of one single individual in our community. Very sad. And that is the truth, and that is a fact. And that negativity has impacted this room and so many more so negatively and deeply. The past four months for us have been incredibly difficult, not just for me, but for my family and friends behind me, fifty families and more. The effects are tripling. We've seen income losses ranging from twenty-five to eighty-five percent, and it's been hard. I'm sure, like many people around the world, we all live paycheck to paycheck, and this has been a brutal hit to us. Today, I stand here as living proof of why these markets matter here on Kauai. From the moment I woke up, when I washed my face in the skincare I apply on my skin, to the breakfast I ate, to the coffee I drank, to the clothes that I am wearing today from the shirt, designed, printed, and the pants that I'm even wearing, the jewelry and accessories that I'm wearing, they are all products and made here on the island of Kauaii.
Desiree, hold on a minute. How much more you have?
Ten seconds.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. And this is why we support these types of markets. These spaces are so much more than places to shop. They're the heart of our community and the pathway that connects Kauai-made products to the world. Visitors don't just take home souvenirs, they take home stories, culture, and the spirit of aloha. Please pass this bill. We've already endured so much. Let us continue to do what we love, to keep our support for our families, and to share the talent and beauty of Kauaii with the world. Thank you.
Toni Cordas, followed by Fiora Frieza.
Okay, aloha, I'm Toni Cordas. I own Hawaii Jewel, and I've been a vendor at the Princeville Market for the whole time, for six years. Previous to that, I've been a vendor at Honolae Market for twelve years. So for sixteen years, I have supported myself with markets. For sixteen years, I have worked every Saturday. It was a blessing that Desiree started our market when we had the convoy around the roadwork on the Honolae Hill. It is taking me, I now work four days at the hotel to match two and a half hours of the income that I make on Saturday. I'm a single mom. This is affecting my schedule. I no longer support local businesses because I don't have as much money, so I'm affecting the economy. My ten-year-old daughter's been with me, I'm a single mom, and my ten-year-old daughter's been with me four years, so she lost her job with her magnets. She did, yeah, actually, usually she always get the first sale. She lost her job? I know that, gosh, probably none of us were as grateful. I personally didn't know how good I had until it was gone, even our last market day, which was a surprise. We didn't know our last day was the last day. And also, I've been trying to get into the Honolae Market that I was in for twelve years, and I can't. And up to about two years ago, I could say, "Hey, we're muddy. Hey, our bridge is closed for getting up to Princeville. Can I come to Honolae?" Sure. Hey, Charles, can I come to Kilauea? This is like the product a couple of years ago. Sure, like last minute, I could be so mobile within all the other markets. But now I have jewelry. I can remember, I felt like I used to have a monopoly in 2008 on jewelry, right? And now I can't, I'm not mobile. I can't get in anywhere. It doesn't matter if I've done this every day for sixteen years. And I have offers to get into the stores, but looking for half-price and then paying taxes on it, it's a lot of, there's a lot of time involved for very little reward in I also, on another note, because I'm at the hotel now four days a week, and I'm talking to a lot of people, and I'm very friendly, and I'm like, "What are you doing today?" Or, "What are your plans?" And they're looking for farmers' markets. And there's been complaints that, okay, well, Kilauea Market is very oversaturated now, and there's no parking and everything, so it's taking the brunt of our absence. Thank you very much. I support Bill 2951.
Fiora Frieza, followed by Joshua Kamalani or Kamalani?
Aloha, my name is Dr. Flora Kriav, and I support Bill 2951. I am a twenty-five-year resident and fifteen-year business owner at Takai Hands Acupuncture and on Aha To Health. Aside from emergency medicine, I find that most pharmaceuticals, like most pharmaceutical use is preventable through diet and lifestyle in my office. And how this kind of weaves in with the farmers' market is that lifestyle and diet is like what people put on their skin and what they put in their body really matters. Mainstream might say differently, but this is what I find in my office. Homegrown and homemade products sold at the Princeville Farmers Market encourage people to make good choices in their lives. Our most popular product is Chi-Bon pain stuff, and like Steve said earlier, the people you meet and the impact that you have on their lives in person is so much different than online. And being able to help someone in person and talk with them and have that relationship is something that lasts for years. And I see that, I've seen this, and it's really interesting, like, almost as far as just real-person connections. So in a world filled with toxins in mainstream stores and whatnot, we just ask that you please consider keeping the market open so that we can continue to provide our goods to the world. Thank you.
Joshua, is Kamalani or Kamalani, followed by Estrella?
My name's Joshua Kamalani, and I'm here in support of Bill 2951. And, you know, I grew up here, and, you know, it's just becoming real difficult to survive here financially, you know what I mean? I'm a renter, I don't own a house. You know, a lot of times, we depend on dual income. You know, I'm a carpenter, my wife is a vendor at this market, and we're definitely feeling the effects of just, you know, one income coming in right now. And this market has been good for us because we have a little baby, and she's able to, you know, be a stay-at-home mom and, you know, make her jewelry at home, you know what I mean? And then it's just one day a week, you know, and like, and that really helps us out. Yeah, I'm just sharing support of the bill, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Estrella Kamalani, and I'm in support of Bill 2951. I was born and raised here on Kauai in Kilauea. Grew up in a home, my road went right into Kilauea Elementary School, graduated from Kapaa High School, went on to play college soccer at University of Hawaii, and I never finished school, and I moved home with a bunch of issues and changed my life. And now I stand strong in being a business owner, a mother, and a proud sober citizen of Kauaii. And at my booth that I saw my jewelry out, which I'm wearing also, I've been doing since my baby was born. I was able to work at home and start when he was four months old, and also share my story to all the people that buy stuff from me, about the island, about where to go, about where to eat, about what tastes the best, where's the best sushi. And I've never had people say anything negative about the market. The only thing is that, "Oh, my gosh, I bought this from you last year and it's still on my wrist." Hey, where'd that market go? It was the best market I've ever been to. And I hear it from the community, and being that I'm born and raised here, my whole entire life, I grew up going to markets with my mom, in a car with no AC and no iPads and no phones and no anything, just like eating the papayas, the season, it was like, you know, not wearing your seatbelt because there's not enough for all twenty kids in the car. You know what I mean? It's like, it's like, where are the roots, and where are we getting back to, and what matters most today in our lives? Is the person that you are, how kind you are to other people, and what is the impact that you're making on other people's lives? Because in the end, nothing matters, except your impact, the person that you are today, and the things that you're going to do to change the world. Today, I stand firmly in representing that this market stay open because it's really impacted my life, and it's made it possible for me to be a good sober citizen and focus on things that I wouldn't have time to do if I was working nine to five. Now I can help other people, and it's really been a blessing, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
David Keener, followed by Rosalie Kaila Laulii.
My name is David Keener, chef, and I've been working at the farmers' markets on the North Shore for close to fifteen years now. These have allowed me to have a platform in the community that would never have been there otherwise, to meet with the community members, our annual visitors or visitors that come here often, and sell my prepared food. In that fifteen years, it's allowed me to, now in the last fifteen months, I own a food trailer that I built myself. Took me nine years, and did it all by hand in that time while working the markets and doing catering work. And what I can say for these markets, and Princeville especially, is allowed me to take this step into this business and continue to sell at the markets. And what I found, I'm into my fifteenth month in the business, and what I've found is, without these markets, there are main staples in me being able to continue in business. I currently employ one full-time person and two part-time people in my business, and it's been very difficult to make ends meet without Princeville. And without these markets, these people that came today and supported 2951 will be hit in a way that's hard to put into words. My daughter's eleven, she's grown up working at these markets. I currently work sixty-five hours a week to make this all work. And we here today appreciate you all coming, and we're all in great hopes that you'll put a lot of thought into this and what it means to our true members in the community and these small businesses, people that work really hard to be at these, many hours beyond the two and a half hours to sell every week. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Rosalie Kaila Laulii. Rosalie Kauli, followed by Larissa Welborn?
My name is Rosalie Kauli. I am in full support for this bill. I think it's very necessary for us. I have been doing markets for over 35 years now. And it has been a great addition to my family and for me. I have three children that I raised with the farmer's markets and hotel lobbies. I make purses, I bought one, anyway, and they're Hawaiian print purses. There's just a really valuable aloha spirit that goes through these markets. And that's what's kept me in this business all these years. I am now 81 years old and I continue to do it as much as I can. I got to the point, I used to do like eight a week. I mean, yeah, eight a week. I'd go to hotels and markets and do this and that's how I raised my kids. My daughters really got a lot of good from this. They learned a lot about business, how to do things, to put a lot of hard work in, to make your work pay off. And they're all entrepreneurs now. My two daughters have a very flourishing roofing company together. And they work really hard and they're doing well. I have a lot of respect for the Princeville Market because these are the younger generation that are coming out and wanting to do this. And I think they need the opportunity that I had to experience this in their lives. The vendors there are all really sweet and loving people and I get along with everybody, everybody gets along. It's just so nice to be able to talk to people from all over the world and learn what you can learn from them and they learn what they want to know about the island from me. That's basically how I feel about it and I definitely need it right now to supplement my social security, you know? And it's only one day a week and now I have to have somebody come with me because it's a little much for me sometimes. And I have somebody set up the tent, but I just don't really want to stop. I don't want to, I just, it's so fulfilling in so many ways for everybody. It's a win-win situation. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larissa Welborn, followed by Tiare Welborn?
Good morning. My name is Larissa Welborn and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of me today. I am in support of this Bill 2951 to allow the weekly Princeville Farmer's Market to reopen and continue. At age 17, my daughter Tiare was given her first opportunity to participate in one of our local farmer's markets. At Waipaa, she started with a small umbrella, a small little table, on her own handmade bangles and earrings made by shells we found at the beach. Over the 13 years, Tiare has worked on local menu, Kauai farmer's markets, and has thoughtfully grown into a great small Kauai business. Over the years, of course, I helped my daughter. We have made some great friends through this. We have seen local farmers, chefs, artists work hard to have their own local sustainable Kauai business. We see some local customers every week and we see visitors enjoy a positive Kauai experience. Tiare was heartbroken to have her job taken away, so are many of her fellow market vendors and people in our community. It is sad to have a few people make a big deal of a small and fixable issue. We can find solutions that will allow us to keep the market. Taking this market away from a larger, more reasonable part of our community is moving in the wrong direction. These markets are vital for our North Shore community. Please let us keep connecting with other people in our community, those visiting our community, and help us provide local jobs for Kauai residents. You have the power to solve this and we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tiare Welborn, followed by Mateo and Bon Moore?
Gosh, I'm emotional. I'm Tiare Welborn, I have, I make jewelry with Tiare Hana Le. I support Bill 2951. That was my mom and that really brought me back, like little Holden. I've been doing markets at Waipaa since I was 17 and before that when I was learning my craft. And markets raised me. I was a very shy little girl and they gave me the confidence to speak to tourists and my community and beyond being a market vendor and this being my life and teaching me so many life lessons to communicate, like really just to be a part of a community when you're a shy person. Like I love markets as a market goer as well. I worked on Tuesday at Waipaa and then I visited markets on Saturday. And I think they are vital for the community in a world that we are on our phones, in our worlds, like the community, the markets are roots. Like I'm proud to be a part. When people ask me what I do, I say, "I do farmer's markets. It's hard work, like we're out there sweating." And it feels like our coolly honor to tell visitors like what we do and remind people that like, you know, Kauai is like a beautiful, happy, amazing place, but there's hard workers trying to like give by every day. And I think it's, markets are such an important way to show like our community and see people you haven't seen and, sorry, I'm a nervous speaker. But yeah, I just think that our markets are very vital in maintaining the island grassroots vibe that we have. And I really hope that we can find a solution to keep doing our markets and spreading aloha. And I totally derailed what I was going to say, but I'm just very appreciative for you guys working so hard to find a solution. We're so open to making everyone happy. Like I, every week people come and they say that they've learned so much from our markets and are in awe of the community that we have and how, and it's important, you know? Anyway, thank you so much. I support our Bill 2951 and all of you so much and hopefully we can have markets back. It's been really hard without them. Thank you.
Mateo and Bon Moore, followed by Carl Imperato?
Hello, everybody. My name's Mateo Moore and this is my wife, Bon. We're longtime Kauai residents. And we were able to vend at the Princeville Market for over two years. And we make products by hand. These are coconut fiber necklaces that Bon makes and I make woodwork products, like Milo Gole, who's also a weaver of coconut fronds. The market's been really good for us. It's helped us to bloom and prosper and grow our business and it became a big part of our income. But we also like the cultural aspect of it. We have a lot of return customers that really appreciate the handcraft and the cultural information that they receive at the markets. Like I teach people about wood and Bon teaches about weaving. And we also have return customers that say that that's one of the reasons that they return to Kauai is because of the market and it's a part of their vacation. And anyway, it's all around good for visitors and the residents and everybody involved. So we support the Bill 2951 and we thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Carl Imperato, followed by Mark Marshall?
Aloha, council members. My name's Carl Imperato and I'm speaking on behalf of the Hana Le Wai Niha Haina Community Association. We do not oppose appropriately approved, appropriately located, appropriately regulated farmers and market markets and we support the general intent of this bill. However, the bill proposes to allow these markets to operate in parks and privately on community use properties throughout Kauai's neighborhoods for up to two days a week with simple over-the-counter permits. There'd be no public hearings, no community input, no requirements related to appropriate size, time of day, noise, traffic, and other issues. Permitting markets in neighborhoods and parks throughout the island with just over-the-counter permits, with no standards for approval or denial, no process for an impacted community's concerns to be heard and considered, and no recourse will inevitably result in harm. I'd be, whether you support or oppose markets, you ought to be frightened by giving unbridled authority to one person in the planning department to approve or deny these markets. Under the bill, the market size, hours, noise, traffic, and other impacts would be determined by the private owners of the property or the Parks and Recreation Department. And neither of them have the motivation, the incentive, or responsibility to look beyond the boundaries of their properties. And to the contrary, some have motivations to maximize revenues by making things as big as they can be without worrying about community impacts. And these are not hypothetical concerns because we've experienced these problems with private landowners and Parks and Recreation's lack of concerns for impacts beyond the boundaries of their facilities. So the simple facts are that markets will not self-regulate, over-the-counter approvals will not provide adequate oversight, and it's essential that the public and neighbors have some say in the types of commercial activities that are allowed in our neighborhoods and parks. It's also important that in revising CZO to allow these kind of previously not permitted activities, the two important bounds be placed on the intensity and the locations of these activities. First, commercial markets in residential areas should be limited to no more than one day per week. Secondly, Kauai's heavily-used beach parks should focus on ocean-related activities and events and not be used for commercial market activities. There are many other locations on the island where we can have those markets. So for these reasons, we ask that you amend the bill. It can be easily amended, quickly amended, to meet the needs that people in this room have all stated. First of all, markets should only be allowed through a use permit process. Secondly, that markets in our neighborhoods should not be allowed to take place more than one day a week. And third, that markets should not be allowed in Kauai's beach parks. It would also be reasonable to allow the existing non-permitted markets to, even though they do need to apply for use permits, to allow them to continue to operate until the final disposition of the use permit hearings.
How much more do you got?
One more sentence.
One more sentence.
Our written testimony includes our proposed amendments to the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. I'd love to clarify a question.
Go ahead.
Carl, is this testimony your personal testimony or it's on behalf of the entire approved, on behalf of the entire Hana Le Wai Niha Haina community?
On behalf of the board of the community association.
Thank you.
Mark Marshall, followed by Risa Marshall?
No, don't apologize.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Risa Marshall. I'm here to support Bill 2951. So it's a DBA, my business name under Risa's rainbow. And back a year 2010, I had my boot at the sparring horn. So I do business around the island of Kauai, it's about 25 years. And it's come along with it after my business at Sparring Horn. So it's the year about 2015. I have a chance to be a market manager. Thank you, the mayor, Bernard Carvalho, he's have a chance for me to be a market manager at the county and every county of Kauai, the farmer market. And thank you for that. I've been working around the people, the vendor, a farmer, who need, just as a small business for a local resident living here. So, and I run a vendor coordinator, non-profit organization, Kai Mi Na Ua Hawa'i's. I hope that, and volunteer work at Light Bridges and Malama Pono, that's what I do, a vendor coordinator. We go a different park and just volunteer work for organization. So it's the year 2000, it's just right before COVID, it's everything shut down from the sparring horn and every proper park. So after that, we have a chance to go, they opened up the, I mean, Hana Le before that. After the landslide around COVID time, we have opportunity to open the Princeville Farmer Market. So what I've been around the island, that's the best market in the world, I think, just for me. Actually, I'm workaholic and so I'd be a farmer after that. So I know it's hard. A lot of people is need to work. I know a lot of people see a little money, but for us, it is make a living for us, it make a difference. So please support us and thank you all your time and please put us back to the market. A lot of people waiting to work. And when we're going to go back to work? Some people one month, two months, three months, but please us, please help us get through the Bill 2951. Thank you all of them.
Thank you.
Mark, you can just use the mic right there.
Oh, can he talk?
Yeah, he can sit right there, yeah.
He likes to talk.
I know. I thought he was going to go sit down.
Thank you, folks. My name is Mark Marshall. I'm a retired County of Kauai Emergency Management Officer. The acronym was KIMO, Kauai Emergency Management Officer. Thank you Bernard for hiring me for that. Had the pleasure of working here. Also established a farm, Roderick Wickler's, up Waialua. Yeah, I named my farm after an earthworm. Because they're actually a principal part of successful growing. And met my lovely wife in Vidina Stadium, selling shawal avocados off of the back of my truck. Where I was okay in growing, I was lousy in marketing and she pulled me through that. And in that first year, looking back at my records, I sold...
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Could I have a coach? And I'm here to support Bill 2951. And like I said, after selling 2,600 pounds of avocado off of the back of my truck in Vidina Stadium and missed the love of my life, farmer's markets have been really good for me. And I still support her by going with her to her markets and stuff right around the island and find it engaging and it's wonderful to see the support of local farmers. And find it engaging, and it's wonderful to see the support of local farmers and their abilities to continue, let them to make a living out of their farming activities. I am done, and thank you, folks, for your hard work and all you council members supporting Bill 2951. Luckily, she wrote that in.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again, man.
Bradley?
He's helping.
All right, good morning. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Bradley Smith. I've been a farmer on Kauai for 25 years. It's a family-run farm, me, my wife, and my sometimes disgruntled teenage son all participate on the farm. We're farming 20 acres. We lease 15 in Kilauea. We farm five in Molua. So 20 acres total, all mixed orchard crops. We raised our family completely on farm income, like real farmers, like we only farmed and no, it's strictly ag has been our life for 25 years. Before the pandemic, we did up to five farmers' markets, and now we're down to three. And we've been participating in farmers' markets for 18 years. We also sell to local stores, restaurants, and then we export to Chinatown because I grow a lot of exotics like rambutan, longan, avocado. And I actually reached out to Arlo in the beginning when the market was canceled, and I was just panicking because we had this really big crop coming on, and he was generous enough to, you know, to say he could hook me up with some of his resources and ag to help me move my crop. And I ended up, it ended up being a good crop, and I ended up selling most of it to Oahu, but I really appreciate that. So farmers' markets are just, this is a vital source for farmers. I mean, farming is so difficult, there's very little financial return, and the markets give us a chance to market directly to the consumer, and so 100% of the sale goes to us, where all my wholesale accounts, it's half, you know, they get 50%, I get 50%. It also gives me a chance to get off the farm, interact with the community, and just get positive feedback, which just, you know, reminds me of why, one of the reasons I get into farming, you know, when you put your heart and your soul into growing this food, and then someone just appreciates it, you know, it's just like, it's nice for someone to be like, oh, this is so good, or you just to get that little bit of feedback is really rewarding because it's, it's hard work, it's really hard work. Let's see, so the, one of the main things with the farmers' markets is the consistency. It's just there's so much, there's so many things that farmers have to go through with pests and, you know, molds, and so there's just so much against a farmer that having a consistent place to sell our produce is just, it's one reliable thing that we can count on every week to go and do. And, you know, ag is just dying. You know, the average age of a farmer is 58, and farmers' markets, you can grow your food, you can throw in your truck, you can go to market, you have a couple hours, it's a concentrated, you know, amount of customers you can sell. But if you're serious about keeping ag alive, you know, in Kauai, farmers' markets are just crucial for that, so.
Thank you.
That's about all to say. Thank you.
Lucia Peterson, followed by Melissa Headstrom.
Hi, my name is Lucia Caballero-Rojo-Petersen. I'm a professional. I used to compete at Pipeline Oahu back in the 90s. I designed my own bathing suits. And for a little bit, I had a shop in Hana'le. Tahiri Nui opened a little space at behind their establishment for me to have my little shop. Before that, I used to do wholesale, sold Big Island, sold Oahu, Coloa, few shops. It was very hard to get into Hana'le because there's a lot of business in Hana'le that one person own a lot of business, and they prefer buying from outsiders than people that live here. And I was very grateful for Desiree to open the space for me to sell my little bikinis. Unfortunately, I had to close my shop in Hana'le because COVID. It came very hard to afford, pay my rent, pay the shop inventory. It was very hard, COVID, so Desiree opened the little space for me. I really miss the shop. I have two other businesses, I, this is my second business. So I worked very hard, and the person that filed, they complained about the shop, the market came to my booth and asked me to take over my booth when I was gone in Brazil to do my designs. And I said, you can't open my booth because you have to talk to Desiree, we have a wait list. When I came back from a trip, I'm the person that tried to take over my business, filed a complaint, and took everybody else's business down. So first, I want to just express how sad I am because it's affect my business and everybody else, and I have that feeling, maybe if I had let them take over my booth, they wouldn't complain, and we all would have business and would be able to pay our bills. Unfortunately, it's not easy for a small business like myself, and I just want to say, please support our farmers' markets. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Melissa Headstrom, followed by Patrick Conley.
Hi there, my name is Missy Headstrom, and my business is called The Trading Hut. These are some of the items I make. I forgot to bring them, but I have a picture. Some of you have actually seen them at the markets before. So I make really cute dresses, all the way from babies up to extra-large adults. I'm a vendor at the Princeville Saturday Market, and I wholeheartedly support Bill 2951, not just for the Princeville Market, but for all the markets to be in compliance. I started my business back in 2000 and have been attending various farmers' markets and craft fairs for the last 27 years. In all that time and all those markets I've attended, the Princeville Saturday Market is by far the best market I have ever been to. Not only is it very well-run, but I regularly sell at least double of what I do at the other markets that I do, due to its great location. It's really helped us get back on our feet after some difficult years. I have many friends who live and work in Princeville who love it too and shop there regularly. I have lived in Wainia for almost 30 years now, and the North Shore has been hit particularly hard financially for years now, starting with the flood in 2018, which was just devastating in many ways. Then, just as the road was open and we were recovering from that and getting back to normal, then COVID hit. Then, just as we were recovering from that, the landslide between Princeville and Hana'le hit. So when Desiree jumped in and started the farmers' market in Princeville from landslide necessity, it was an absolute godsend and has continued to be one. It has been a hardship to have it on hold these last months that it's been shut down. We are anxious to get it going again. Like many other women here, I chose to do craft fairs and farmers' markets with my business instead of a brick-and-mortar so that my schedule would be flexible, and much of my work done from home to be there for our children. There are definitely easier jobs I could do than loading and unloading heavy inventory and setting up tents in the rain and the heat, but it's a job I've come to love, and being at the market is a wonderful way to be a part of my community and earn a living. It's getting harder and harder to make a living these days. It would be terrible to have these opportunities taken away from us. I'm sure we can find a way to make it work for the Princeville community and others in mind. Thank you so much for your consideration on this bill.
Patrick Conley, followed by Lonnie Sykos.
Hi, my name is Patrick Conley. I am here in support of Bill 2951. I'm a artist. I've actually only done two of the wonderful markets, but I was very excited about them. I also help my wife, who does the markets. And I just wanted to point out just a couple of things that maybe people haven't mentioned. You've heard a lot of great stories about how important these markets are, but I want you to know that the Princeville Market is specifically really special and really, in my opinion, the best market on the island. And it's very different than all the other markets. It just has this incredible vibe, this incredible atmosphere, people love it, they love working there, they love going there. And I feel like, growing up here, we're kind of losing what makes Kauai Kauai, I don't know if you guys can relate to that. I feel like these markets, especially this one, really has that heart and soul of the And I feel like, without the markets, you know, it's just all Starbucks and Costco, and we're kind of losing that, that heart and soul. So I feel like it's so important to do whatever we can to make these, make these markets work, you know? So I hope you guys will do what you can, and I really appreciate you hearing us out. And I support the bill, and I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Lonnie Sykos, followed by Amy Vanderhoop.
For the record, Lonnie Sykos, to the council chair, Mel, how many people have you talked to in Waialua house lots where we live? And so how many people in house lots are supportive of this? I totally resent and object to this bill, right? You took our property taxes for decades and decades and decades. We built parks, and now you want to turn our parks, which are open spaces, into commercial activities? I live in Waialua house lots. You bring this stuff into our park and house lots, and I guarantee you that the people that live in house lots will be protesting. We don't need more traffic. We have the longest traffic light on Kauai that lets you get into the house lots. We don't want more traffic. I want to see the businesses that are in business succeed. I want our brick-and-mortar businesses, and we have lots of empty spaces, to survive. I also think that it is foolish of the county council to put more money, more resources into tourism. Excuse me, but I read the news. Foreigners are not coming to the United States, and even in California, the rates coming here are down. Tourism's going to take a hit because of our national policies, and here we are pushing more tourism. There's no new money generated here. It's not like these parks are going to become a source of income that would not have been available through commercial activity. It is not appropriate to have commercial activity in our county parks. They're there for us to find sanctuary, rest, quiet, not to mention what happens when you give some entity the right to hold their event two times a week, more than that perhaps? What happens when the people want to play sports? Right? Who gets access to the park? Somebody that wants to play sports, or somebody that wants to have a commercial operation? I mean, this is foolish. Princeville needs to go get a special land use permit and suck it up over the insurance liability and solve their own problem instead of trying to create commercialism in all of our parks. And if you guys think doing this in the parks is smart, then first place you should open up your pop-up tent is in the lobby of this building and in the yard out in front. My time's up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I oppose this.
Thank you.
Amy Vanderhoop, followed by Emily Olson.
Hi, I'm Amy Vanderhoop. I'm a mosaic artist. I make stained glass art, something like this. And after, my business is called Island Mermaid Creations. After bartending on this island for 19 years, I was finally able to make the switch to make art full-time, which has been a dream of mine since I was like this big. And I've done markets all over the island. The Princeville Farmers Market is beyond by far my best market, three times more than any other market that I make. I go the south side, I go the east side, I go all over. I go right in Princeville to another one that's not as visible and is not as highly attended. So the sudden and abrupt canceling of this market in January with no notice was about 75% cut to my incomes. I do not want to go back to serving at the bar. I'm able to be outside, I'm able to have community and meet people from all across the world. People tell me they come back to Kauai and back to these markets specifically to meet real people that make real things with their hands, and they, they have a memento and a story, and I direct them to the other farmers' markets or other places on the island to go to. After being a tour guide for a lot of time, I have all the spots. And I just wanted to say that I support Bill 2951. It means a lot to me. I would love to be able to go back to supporting myself. It's just becoming so expensive to live here that I really am hoping that you guys can get this back and going so that we can get back to our community of selling to people and meeting people. And I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you for listening, and I hope that we get to get back to making art for people here and all over. So thank you for listening to me. Aloha.
Next speaker is Emily Olson, followed by Erm Buz.
Hi, everybody. My name is Emily Olson, and I support Bill 2951. I am here representing myself as a small business owner on Kauai and also a Princeville homeowner. So I see both sides, and I've been listening to a lot of the things being said here as well, so I'd like to address some of those things as well. I have been able to attend the Artisan Flea Market as a local ice cream business. We support farmers on the island with 70% island-grown products using our ice cream. And we graduated as to a brick-and-mortar business that's in Kapah, that's actually Collab Cafe, which we are in partnership with Outpost Coffee, who also is a part of this artisan market. And it's funny when we say about supporting brick-and-mortar businesses because it's really awesome that we are one now, but it's actually been harder in many ways. And I think the economics of making it work on this island and that, that economic ratio of what your rent is, what you know, your time, and efficiency of your time is a super important thing for small businesses to make something work. And when you see something successful, like the Princeville Artisan Flea Market, that has a balance of local, this, local customers, visitors, density of people, density of the amount of vendors to attract that, it's a special recipe for success. And it was, it's a success for the small businesses that I'm part of. And also, as a resident of Princeville, I'll say that as someone that is so much a lover of the local culture and everything that makes Kauai special, Princeville can sometimes feel void of that because it can be so tourist-driven, and this has brought so much culture and life to Princeville. I have gone to all of my neighbors asking them to advocate for this market and speak up, and the answer has been, well, duh. Why, of course we want a farmers' market, but they don't realize that actually some people are naysayers to it, and they're busy with their lives, so they're not here in this room, or it may, they may not take that time to write a letter. I've sat inside the Princeville board meetings and listened to the people that are opposing it. And honestly, it seems really small in the scheme of what is happening here as far as an economic engine for so many stories that you can hear in this room. I don't need to speak to my own because it's the same, as everyone in this room is a small business owner. And I think that when you see a success story, we get behind it. And I thank everyone here who has put the momentum behind this bill. And of course, there's little tweaks when you look at something as a broader scale and that, and the impact that it has. And I want to thank Desiree. And I want to thank Desiree, because she sits in those three seats of being a small business owner, a Princeville resident, and someone who is coordinating the market, who sees all the perspectives and the feedback that's come around, whether it's traffic, or trash cans, or bathrooms, or things, has been addressed immediately and attentively and respectfully. And I am so grateful. And so thank you for the opportunity to just have a voice here today and for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Buzzin, followed by Savitri Mason.
Hi, Erin. So I actually came to speak...
I'm sorry, could you just state your name for a caption?
Oh, Erin Buzzini. So I came here to speak on the resolution that's about to be discussed after this meeting about Young Brothers 35% increase for shipping. I think all of you should be aware of that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. The public hearing is on...
Yeah, I'm just notifying them because I'm not sure. Everybody's concerned about the cost of living and your crafts and where you're going to sell your goods. What you really should be concerned about is what's coming up after this meeting, and you should all stick around. So, in that being said, I'm a little bit indifferent as far as the farmers' markets go. I've been a resident here for 27 years. I'm a grandmother of five grandchildren. We often use the parks on Saturday because we go to school and we work all week. So when I show up at a farmer's market on a Saturday and there's nowhere for the kids to play, it's completely packed with tourists, we don't know who's coming and who's going. And that's a problem for me because these tourists come and go. As locals, we know, a lot of the locals, we have 70,000 residents. We all pretty much know each other, and we look out for each other. When we have an influx of many, many strangers, hundreds of people, we can't use the park space on Saturday. That we know. We work all week. Saturday is day for the kids. So I'm not completely opposed to the farmers' markets. I think that maybe every other Saturday, or maybe two Saturdays out of the month, like, we need to be fair. And I do understand the guys' concerns from the house lots, being that public open spaces for the parks are for sports, children, to be safe, for us not to be concerned about, you know, every stranger that's coming off the airplane and going, lurking in the bushes, or whatever's going on. We already have enough of that with the locals. So a balance in all things and everything. I get it. We all need to make a living. But when I show up every Saturday at a park and there's nowhere for the kids to go run around and play, then the beaches are packed. You know, it's like everywhere we go, there's nowhere to go. So if you do decide to move forward with your park usage, please consider that maybe you limit it to one to two days a month, or Saturdays. You know what I mean? Maybe two Saturdays a month, or one Saturday, whatever it may be. I get it. We all are suffering. But if you think you're suffering now, just wait till Young Brothers puts a 35% increase in all your goods.
Savitri Mason, followed by Yantini Wood.
Aloha. My name is Savitri Mason. First, I'm not a vendor at this market. I'm just here today to support the market. And I think it's a wonderful thing to have so vendors can make money and the buyer have choice. And also, everybody have their own reason. But I hope is we can work together and get the best thing for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, the last registered speaker is Yantini Wood.
Aloha. My name is Yantini Wood. I'm one of the vendor in... Oh, sorry. One of the vendor at Princeville Farmers Market. I'm the owner of Warung Bali. There's a traditional Balinese food. I'm doing this...
Relax, relax. Thank you.
I know.
These guys make you nervous? Then don't look at them. Just look at me. I'll be...
My family has been doing the farmers' market in Kauai for 15 years. And I love to doing the farmers' market. So I have so many local customers and tourists who come to my boots and buy my food. And now I have grandchildren, so I need to sell more food to support my family. So please keep the farmers' market open, and I support Bill 2951. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No further registered speakers.
Tell us the last registered speaker. Was there anyone else that wanted to testify that did not testify? Okay, is there anyone else that testified but wanted to testify for a second time? Okay, come on up.
She's the first time. Go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aida. So I'm a business owner since 2017, when I was working at the pharmacy. I don't know if you... I worked two jobs since then. Like, I start 5:00 AM until 12:00, good other job, 1:00 till 11:00. That's my job since then. And I'm a single parent. I'm a single mom. And I'm supporting my daughter by myself ever since. So she graduated through the farmers' market. I worked very hard for my daughter to set up early in the morning to go to the farmers' market. And I'm so blessed that God gave me the Princeville Market, and it's the best one I have. And I now, I came here to support 2951. Please make it work for everybody. And we're eager to have that market already because it's been so hard and tough for everybody. And hopefully, you guys can work it out for, you know, for this bill. Please. Thank you.
Please come up. You can have your second three minutes.
Thank you.
By the way, you look amazing for 81.
I know. Yay, thank you. You don't feel like it. But anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, I can remember back in Poipu when the seals were coming up into the baby pond where I brought my kids when they were little. They're now like 45, 50 years old. But that was when I would feel, why? Just because the seals are here? I want to bring my kids here to swim, you know? And I understand her point, you know, that she, the lady, you know, not wanting to do that. But, you know, it's a big park. It's a really big park. There's playthings for the kids, and the kids are there playing while the fair is going on. It's like having a fair. It's like having the county fair, anything else, you know? And it's only for a few hours on Saturdays. Three hours, I think. You know, and I just don't, you know, I think there can be a way to share, you know, with maybe just giving up one day a week for a couple of hours where your child can go play on the other... It's a huge park. There's lots of playroom there. And I just wanted to say that. I feel like people get involved with, you know, their area and what they want to use it for. I don't think they're thinking of the good of the whole. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Yes, Desiree. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Dr. Amin Hirani. I just wanted to share my support for the bill. To me, it's just, it's such a huge asset to the community, and it's consistent with our values. It brings people together. It supports our local farmers and sustainability. And it's just, I appreciate the support to open it up on the island. And, you know, the more we can do to promote activities and events like this, I think it helps us maintain our culture. And it just, to me, it's just a no-brainer. And it's just a win-win for so many people, our residents, our farmers, our artisans. So, you know, thank you guys for the support.
Thank you.
Again, Desiree Hirani, thank you for the opportunity to speak a second time. I just want to, for those especially that might be listening at home, as well as our council members. I am the organizer, as I said, of the Princeville Farmers and Artist Market, as well as the Princeville Artisan Flea Market. And in regards to the use of the space for families in the parks and taking over parks, let it be said for the record, please, that I have a child who uses the park during the same time we're at the market. It's one of the reasons that me and at least a dozen other vendors there choose this place is because we can work and keep an eye on our little one. And again, there are about 12 of us that have our kids who play in that park. Outside of that, I have been monitoring the park closely every single weekend since it has closed that I have physically been able to go. And during these hours, such like when we were in operation, you'll never see more than a dozen people at these markets at any time. Oftentimes, during the Saturdays when we were shut down, there was nobody at the park. More than that, nobody at the park. I made several videos saying, "Here we are again, Saturday morning, nobody using the park. I'm the only one here." On a couple occasions, though, there were families that were using the park. And just want to remind everyone that the parks are not for sanctuary and peace and quiet. You can go to yoga for that. You can find a zen. You can do so many things in this beautiful island. Parks are a place for community gather, to meet your neighbors, to see your friends, to watch your little ones play and thrive, to have barbecues. We don't really see that these days that much because people are working their koles off. So we're not able to even enjoy the parks. So I have heard this discussion that people cannot use the parks when there are markets going place. Someone earlier spoke about people popping up at parks around the island. You know, let's be honest here and real, that people who are having markets work with integrity, and they are going to keep their neighbors and the community in mind. And when there are errors, and we're human, there are, we will address them accordingly. And we still have yet to apply with the Parks Department, with the Planning Department. We don't get free rein, and it's not like everyone is running to go down to the parks. It's a lot of work to create a market. You can't find people who want to do it. So please just keep that in mind. Felicia, I know for you as well, you've heard a lot of, apparently, there have been a lot of people in chatter of this. I haven't heard many, not more than 10 or 12, but I would like to say that for the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I need to say something?
Yes.
David Keener. I just wanted to, something came up for me when the gentleman came from the house lots to speak so passionately about his feelings and issues. And I heard him say, he wants to see the other businesses succeed that are working, meaning brick-and-mortars probably, other businesses in the community. The one thing I can say, and there are some people sitting in this room that work at these markets, have their products there. These markets allowed us to step beyond as community members, small people that didn't have a lot of resources to start businesses, and step into beyond the markets and be doing business in the community at a brick-and-mortar location. And I'm an example of that. And I just kind of wanted to address that when I look at the numbers as a small business person and the people that I'm trying to support also by hiring in my small business within our community, it relies still on these markets because they're a platform to go into the community where there's a number of people and visitors and our community members that come out every week and support it and spend money. And it's money going right into our community and members, everybody sitting in this room that's a part of the markets, people that aren't here. So I just, it brought up something for me that I just wanted to address and say. These markets are supporting more than they just appear to be. And the people involved in these markets are great stewards as well. I've been at the markets for close to 15 years and involved with a lot of different aspects in selling at them. And one thing that I can say is the togetherness at this market I have not seen at any other market yet. When there's a storm, when a table collapses, what you witnessed today with other members helping individuals, you see that at the heart of these markets. And this Princeville Market is the best brand market that I've been at in 15 years. And these people that come out every week are really experienced at the markets. They've been there, many of them longer than me. And I just kind of wanted to address some of the stuff that came up to me as I'm sitting and listening to all of the stuff today.
Thank you.
Hi, Toni Cornes, owner of Hawaii Jewel and vendor at the markets for 16 years. I just wanted to say that coming here today, my motivation was financial. And then seeing my Saturday ohana behind me makes me realize that my motivation isn't all financial. I miss everybody. And it will be when we have a chance to be together on Saturdays, then we just... Gosh, in all this work, there is a whole lot of fun that we have. And like some of this, I've been for 16 years. Every day I have 100 of these sarongs I have. I have soaps and things and pants. Anyway, I just, I hope we can all come together. Our little, our big, our little group has been together for a long time. And artists tend, a lot of times, to be harmony. So it's really fun to get our group of people together. So just from our community's sake, our mini-community within the community, it would be nice to get us all back together. I support Bill 2951.
Anyone else?
Aloha, I'm sorry. I'm back again. Anyway, I'm just afraid I might call that...
You could just speak today.
...I'm ready to make a paper. Anyway, I'm Linda Yoki, a farmer from Molua. And I think I'm one of the first ones who started farmers' market in Kauai. Some of you guys probably see me so many, many times. Sometimes I like to try to find some. But here I am still helping in our community, serving. And yeah, try to sell our product that we produce from... And yeah, try to sell our product that we produce from our farm for our community. And it's amazing, yeah, like we said, now the tourists are start coming and they like to see this also. And, well, I'm already a farmer, so that was our purpose, you know, be a farmer. And so, anyway, I used to sell in every farmers' market. I go to Kapaa, Leihoi. I think from the beginning of Sunshine Market, I almost resided in every one of them. Like I said, you probably know most of you. And in all of it, I love all the Sunshine Market that I used to go, but I find a farmers' market in Princeville was the best. So nice, and it's so nice, you know, it's so nice to see also that we see these other people that come from other places, like I said. And the people from Mauna, it's more convenient for them also to come. Because some of them, they don't want to go to Leihoi all the way. So, this is nice. And it's so nice to see people, you know, appreciate what we have, you know. And here we're still trying to continue selling. So, I have only that one and Inuaipano, and that's the source of our life. And I thank for being a farmer also because I know it's a hard work, but I'm so glad I was able to send my two children, our two children in college, through hard work from farming. And like I said, thank you so much again. And thank you for leading us also, so over there, Desiree. And yeah, she said it all, everything. She works so hard, this lady, to keep us all alive. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for all the sacrifices that you do, from trash cans to cleaning the restroom, everything. We try to follow the rules, you know. And please, you know, if you can help us continue to have the market. Because right now, that's one of my only two market Wi-Fi on that one that I got left. And I feel so lost when we're going to have the Princeville anymore. And I say, "Oh, my God."
Thank you.
Well, I gotta work more hard in the farm now. But.
Okay, I guess stop it then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again. Have a nice day.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else?
Aloha, everybody. My name is Carlos, Carlos Inigo, and I'm the owner of Coca-Cola Collective with a cacao company here on the island. And I stand in favor of the bill, not only because it helped me to bring a dream into fruition, you know. We started with not much, and the farmers' market has kept us going every week to just keep growing and keep, you know, working towards the perfection of our own craft, right? And I've seen so many people doing that. And, you know, farmers' markets are not only about economic gain, but also it gives us the opportunity to express ourselves to the community and make connections, make new friends. It's an incredible community gathering space. And it's also a stand for the earth, you know. Yesterday was Earth Day, right? It's a stand for the earth because it's an opportunity to share the things that we are growing in our homes. Farmers' markets all over the world have been happening for millennia. You know, everybody will bring what they got and trade it, right? And so, it also brings food security to the island. Everybody gets to know what people are growing. And, you know, it's good for times of emergency to also have those connections. And so, you know, I understand the concerns that people are having, but let's not forget where we come from. You know, it's so easy in this world to get narrow-minded and get immersed in our little bubbles of our little homes. But, you know, the world is so big, and I think that we all long for connection. And the farmers' market really gives us that opportunity to relate to each other, to take care of each other. And yeah, I would like to extend gratitude to everybody here for hearing us. And also, of course, Desiree for being such an earth warrior, right, for all of us. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Carlos, you didn't say your last name. Can you say your last name?
Carlos Inigo.
Say it one more time?
Inigo, it's Spanish name, sorry.
Inigo.
I-N-I-G-O.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is it okay if I read someone else's letter?
Say what?
Someone else's letter. She wanted to come today.
You have three minutes.
Okay, she tried to come today, but she couldn't. She's at her store. Her letter reads, "My name is Gabrielle Edwards, Waineha resident and co-owner of the Waineha Country Market. I'm writing to express my strong support for Bill 2951. This bill represents an important step towards fostering a more sustainable and circular economy that reflects the values of our community and island. I believe that Bill 2951 creates meaningful opportunities for local entrepreneurs and small-scale vendors without creating conflict with existing brick-and-mortar businesses such as mine. Rather than competition, we see market vendors as partners, and it encourages collaboration and expanding access to diverse goods and services, particularly those that reflect the unique culture and resources of our island. I also trust that the county's Planning and Parks Department under this new bill's guidelines will issue permits with care and integrity, keeping residents' needs and quality of life at the forefront. Kauai's strength lies in our tight-knit, community-driven approach, and I am confident that the implementation of this bill will reflect that same spirit. Thank you for your leadership in supporting policies that uplift local businesses, empower residents, and protect our Ina." I also have one question. The Waineha Community Board or whatever that the guy spoke about earlier, what is that? I lived there for a very long time, never heard of it. Does anybody, any of you guys know what it is?
For 40 years.
Okay.
Very prominent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And it has board members, and they meet?
All the time, every month. They just.
Okay, no, no, we're not. Yeah, they are, they're a community organization, so.
Okay.
Anyone else? Go on up.
Hi again, Council, Billy Carter. In support of 2951. Earning the tax dollars today, huh, guys? This is a long one. Really appreciate the people who came in with concerns about the bill. The bill was really well-written. All these concerns are thought of. There's two sides to every story, of course. And between the lines, kind of implicit in the bill, is also that, you know, I've only been here for 12 years. But I really, I come from a small community. I feel that here, too. And, you know, this community and everyone who's born and raised out here, you guys really take care of each other. And so, I don't have really any fears about people taking over or this turning into some, you know, commercial monstrosity like these fears are because we got each other's backs, and especially the people born and raised. You guys really take care of each other. So, I think the time for nitpicking the bill apart is over. The bill's great. I just, please, you know, let's not hate these people for making money any longer and try to get this thing passed through as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Angie Van River again, Island Mermaid Creations. And I just had a few things I wanted to say that I got a little discombobulated by the gentleman in front of me with his passion. And so, I just wanted to say, I waited over a year to get into this market. Waited on pins and needles. I finally got in in June. It was the best six months ever. And having it ripped away in January was just devastating. The second thing is that it's only three hours a day, once a week. And I have seen whole soccer teams go and set up and play right there while I'm vending. They have this whole area. We are on maybe a third of the whole block. Then there's also a whole playground over there when I hardly ever see anybody playing on it. So, I just want to say that. And also, when I make good money at this market, I go and spend it at all the shops in Honolulu. I know that one of the first person that complained and started this whole thing said that we were taking money away from his brick and mortar. I spend my money at his brick and mortar if I have a good market. So, guess what? I don't have any money to spend at any shops in Honolulu. So, it's really going to affect him more than he thinks to not have the market. So, or any of the people in Honolulu. So, just wanted to say that, and also thank you guys so much for hearing us.
Thank you.
Aloha.
Hello.
My name is Michael Young, resident here. When I moved back to Kauai a little over 10 years ago, I was as a chef for one of the hotels here. And, I mean, as you can tell, I'm the man, right? I look like the man. I never wanted to be the man, but I was like, "I'm going to spend the man's money." Right? So, I have millions of dollars that I could spend, and I want to, I'm going to spend as much as I can local. And I don't know if you realize how hard that is at times, especially with farmers. And the reason being is they've been burned so many times by restaurants and hotels. They show up with the delivery, the back of the truck, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, I don't need that anymore. I changed my menu." You know, the farmer's like, "Well, what about all the goods here and all the weeks and months in the ground, yeah?" And it took years to rebuild that trust. But guess where the farmers went in between, right? And where they still are. They went to the farmers' markets because they realized we can go straight to the people. We can make our money. We cut out the middleman. It's a weekly guaranteed income, and I'm not at the whim of someone else. And now they have that rep pulled out, and then again. Or the possibility of it, because we're not just talking about one market. And so, to see this stabilized and to guarantee so many people that they don't have to live in fear of like, "My gosh, what's going to happen next week?" is huge. And I think, to me, that's where I see the importance. I mean, yes, it impacted me greatly. But I've been lucky. I've been able to scramble, make other things happen. Not everybody's like that. I don't have a commitment to the Ina and all the product that's in the ground waiting to find someone to buy it. And another thing I would say is that whenever someone comes to the island and they ask, "Well, how do I cook this? What do I do? What should I do?" whether it be new chefs or whoever, I'm like, "Go to the farmers' markets. Talk to the people who grow it. Ask them, 'Hey, how do you cook this? How do you eat this?'" One, you get to know more about the product, but you get to meet people. You get to understand the people of the island. You get to understand Kauai. And you're getting to know people one-on-one. And visitors, too. It's not, you're not going to where someone's paying you to be to show aloha. You're going out and meeting people of the island who share that aloha. So, stabilizing this, codifying this, is fantastic. And I thank you for, by the way, I strongly am supportive of Bill 2951. So, I'm glad to say that. But mahalo.
Anyone else?
Hey, guys, just wanted to start off by, oh, my name is Lawrence Young, by the way.
I'm sorry, Lawrence?
Lawrence Young.
Lawrence Young.
Yeah, I'm also a vendor at the farmers' market. Just wanted to say thank you so much for taking the time today. Greatly appreciate it. So, I was born and raised on Kauai. I moved away after graduating high school and met my wife over in Hilo where I pursued higher education. So, we moved back three years ago when my son was six months old. And my parents were already set up at this Princeville market. They worked in Desiree. She got them set up with that. So, they got a booth selling fresh dig goods like this over here. Got some pineapple coconut bread that me and my mom made from scratch. Also got some banana bread. So, we do things like that. We do butter mochi, fresh homemade jam using fresh fruits. We also sell fresh produce as well. And this opportunity has given me and my wife a chance to be stay-at-home parents. You know, so my son doesn't have the example of seeing us go to work for somebody else every day. It's a different kind of mindset. And, I mean, it really was a bummer when the market got shut out. It hit us hard. And hopefully, things change with that. You know, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but just want to say thank you again, guys.
Thank you. A vital glows a bread from you if you're selling. I can smell it.
He said he wants a bite.
Anyone else?
Next time.
Did he say next time? Mr. Hart? Actually, serious.
For the record, Bruce Hart, I listened to a lot of it. For me, the question is not whether the people in here are justified. I feel completely that what they do is worthwhile. And I want them to know, I think, them of value in all the different aspects of their business that they have put forward to be good for the community. That's not the question. The question is, should they, as a particular, specific group of people, be given the right to use the county parks, the people's parks? And that's the decision you have to make. And look forward. Look into the future and see what will happen. And take it seriously because once you open this door, you will not be able to shut it. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I want to thank you all. I know most, if not all of you, had to come from across several bridges. And I know you all said, "Thank us for the time where we have to be here. You don't." So, we thank you guys for coming in. I don't remember this chamber being this full in a very long time, so. And I mean that, so thank you all. This will show up on the committee meeting on May 7th, where we'll have the discussion and the deliberation. So, your testimonies here will carry over to that discussion so you don't have to all show up again and testify again. But you obviously will have that opportunity. So, with that, if there's no further discussion, that public hearing is closed. We will take our caption break at this time. Let's reconvene at 10:45.
Good morning. Council meeting, April 23rd, is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Here.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Here.
Councilmember Cowden.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Present.
Councilmember Kuli.
Present.
Councilchair proposal.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So move.
Okay. Move and second it. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
Your next item are minutes on page two of the following meetings of the council, the March 25th, 2025 council meeting, and the April 9th, 2025 public hearing regarding Bill Number 2945, Bill Number 2946, Bill Number 2947, and Bill Number 2948.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and second it. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
Items on the consent calendar for receipt, C2025-94, 95, 96, 97, 98, and on page 3, 99.
Move to receive.
Second.
Move and second it. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
Next item is a communication, C2025-100. Communication from the county attorney requesting council approval of indemnification provision contained in the LinkedIn user agreement to post the current deputy county attorney vacancy on LinkedIn to broaden the outreach and attract highly qualified candidates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
C2025-101. Communication from the county attorney requesting council approval of the indemnification provision contained in the CVIS proposal for appraisal services to appraise all county of Kauai facilities listed on the statement of values as a multi-term initiative over the next three years. This will provide up-to-date valuations that reflect current market conditions and construction costs, allowing for more precise budgeting, insurance, coverage, and asset management.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry, public testimony?
Is this the only time this comes up today?
Oh, you talking about the indemnification agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you want to testify in that?
I'll pass.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you guys are going slow, I don't remember. I want to talk on the Young Brothers thing, please hold on.
That hasn't come up yet.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, yeah.
Trying to keep up on my program.
Okay. All right. Again, no, no public testimony with that. Motion is to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
C2025-102. Communication from the prosecuting attorney requesting council approval to reallocate State of Hawaii Department of Health Alcohol and Drug Abuse Division State Opioid Resource Grant Program funds in the amount of $35,000 to be used to support the personnel cost of the prevention service specialists previously funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, which abruptly terminated on March 24th, 2025. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
C2025-103. Communication from the executive on aging requesting council approval to receive and extend donations from five various sources in the amount of $355 for fiscal year 2025 for the home-delivered meals program to help offset costs of the meals served. The provision of home-delivered meal service aims to maintain or improve Kukunon nutritional status, social well-being, and ability to remain in the community.
Move to approve. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion or public testimony? With that, I'll suspend the rules.
Um, I just want to keep it quick, I kind of support of funding Kukunon meal programs as well as TB programs, and that we get to spend those kinds of services. Because especially Kukunon fixed incomes have a really hard time staying in our community. Thank you.
Say your name again.
Lana Bilbo.
Lana Bilbo.
Thank you. Mr. Psychos?
For the record, Lana Psychos. Hey, I just wanted to double check that the five various sources is only $355?
Correct.
Wow. Uh... Perhaps the appropriate authority could inform the public as to whether or not this is a sufficient amount of money to maintain current services?
Okay, let me, let me explain what this is. So anytime, so the Meals on Wheels program funded by the county, we give funds from the state and federal government. This year, this budget, we're fully funding it, so everybody gets a meal. There's no waiting list. Whenever we accept a donation from the public, regardless of what it is, it has to be approved by the council. So Meals on Wheels program, when they go deliver these meals, some of these families pay for their meals. It's not all free.
Yes.
Some of them make a donation. And they'll say, hey, you know, here's five bucks, 10 bucks, 20 bucks. That's what this is. This is just the donation money that was received that requires the council approval. This, this is not, this is not the county's funds that are paid for the meals.
Got, got you. And so the, the rest of my observation would be, it's good to hear that the county has sufficient funds to provide meals to everyone that wants them. Should that become a budgetary problem in the future, that we need to create perhaps an easier mechanism for the public to donate to this? I'm very grateful to the five sources for the money they donated. And my own family, being the beneficiary of Meals on Wheels, albeit in a different state, I'm very much appreciative of the value of the program. And to keep it fully funded, I'm sure the public would be more than happy to contribute to this politically neutral program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next item, please.
On page four, claim, C2025-104. Communication from the county clerk transmitting a claim filed against the county of Kauai by State Farm Mutual Insurance Company, a subrogate for Vincent Leventhal for vehicle damage pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Kauai.
Move to refer to the county attorney for disposition and report.
Move to refer to the county attorney for disposition and report back as necessary.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Your next item are your committee reports from your planning committee, CRPL two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-three, two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-four, two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-five, and two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and second it. Any discussion of public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
On page five, resolutions. Resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-twenty-two, resolution confirming mayoral appointment to the Board of Water Supply for Clyde Codani.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and second it. Any discussion or public testimony, Ms. Cowden?
Um, I just want to really applaud the choice for Clyde Codani. I think he'll be very good. I spent yesterday, you know, at the Board of Water Supplies workshop, and they really do an extraordinary job dealing with a very difficult situation, and so it's, it's great seeing a really well-functioning board, and I think he will make an excellent addition.
Alright, we'll agree. Anyone else? If not, the motion is to approve. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Canashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Raposo.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-two-three, resolution amending resolution number two-zero-two-four-dash-eleven, authorizing the mayor or the director of finance of the county of Kauai to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Hawaii Department of Health for a loan from the State Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for the Waialua SPS number three rehabilitation project, see one-five-zero-zero-five-five-dash-zero-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion of public testimony?
Uh...
You have a question?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll suspend the rules.
Troy Tanygal, county engineer, for the record.
Thank you. So this is largely making the threshold be ten million dollars as opposed to four and a half million dollars?
That's correct.
And, um, so we're, we're basically just trying to change that threshold. That's the main goal of this?
That's correct.
And so we want to get this loan, and then so the, the rehabilitation of that pump, does that mean it won't sink on the corner there anymore? Is that the one right there across from the gas station next to Poco Pumps?
No, SPS three is further down the coast. Believe it's about halfway through Alakalook.
Okay, and we talked about this already, and this is part of what's creating the problem at Lidgate, at the wastewater treatment plant?
It's, it's a pump station. The pump station is, it has a lot of old components, so this project will update, you know, the various components in the pump station.
And I know we just went through this, I think, on the CIP budget or in the budget. We talked about this, right? But are we gonna borrow all ten million dollars? Is it gonna cost that much to fix it?
Well, the current bid is over budget, so what the ten million does, it provides the funding that's needed to award the contract. CM Services is also gonna be required for this project, so, you know, part of that ten million will go to fund that, and only the funds that are needed will be, will be used from that, from that amount, amount. So hopefully it won't amount to ten million, but, you know, we're just gonna be using what we need.
Okay, and then, so when we get, when is this gonna get fixed? I know we talked about it a little bit, but I just hear all these challenges from that area.
Doc Caputo, we saw the engineer. So we did this out, so once we award, then it'll say maybe six months to get them going, and then maybe a year and a half, two years for them to complete the project.
Okay, so it's a while, and...
I mean, it's, the problem with this project is just a tight area to work, so, you know, there's not a lot of room for them to operate, so, you know, it's, it's right in front of Kauai's doors. It's the one, right, the posse's right from that hotel.
Okay, alright, and then the challenge that we're having at Lidgate, this is not gonna necessarily fix it. It's just gonna get the stuff there.
We, we tried to fix all, all the other parts of the system. Yeah, the, the, the thing stuff is separate. This is just, we tried to fix pump stations as well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Not, thank you. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Canashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Raposo.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-two-four, resolution establishing traffic lane modifications and a stop sign on Olahaina Road and removing a stop sign on Kaapuni Road, county of Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and second it. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, I have a question. I'll suspend the rules.
Good morning, Mike Komol, chief of engineering, for the record.
Thank you. So I'm familiar with this intersection at Olahaina Road, and it is always a confusing intersection for me. I kind of know how it's supposed to go, but it doesn't makes, it's not instinctive or intuitive. So that's the correction you're trying to make, right? So what feels like a straight road would stay going straight instead of having the stop sign on the straight road?
That's correct, yes. So, yeah, Kaapuni Road and the Mackay portion of Olahaina Road would have no stop sign and just continue through with no, no traffic control, whereas Kai Alua Road and the Malka portion of Olahaina Road would come in right angles to that, roughly speaking, and have a stop sign on the underside. So it's, it's more like a normal four-way intersection than the weird Y intersection it is today.
So I'm gonna support this. I guess a couple of questions I have, because I don't drive this every day. Probably you do. Probably Councilmember Holland does. I do it maybe once a month or something like that. So I was kind of going, huh, you know, as I go through it for decades. Was there a public hearing on this in anywhere in that neighborhood? Did they, did they, who, who asked for this? To me, it makes sense. Is it just us deciding, we got a crazy intersection here? Or was it driven by community input?
This was driven by engineering and design issues, and we think it's a better solution for this intersection. We've had lots of complaints there for decades.
Okay.
There's a mirror there. Mirrors are inherently problematic for a number of reasons, and we had this project on Olahaina Road, and we realized that we could, if I can take it properly, just do some minor adjustments to the pavement and square it up. Kind of squared it up. It's not gonna be perfectly square, obviously. It's still, it rolls with curve as they come in, but we felt that it was an appropriate solution. We knew we'd be coming here to a public body to get your approval. We didn't feel that there was any need to get public input because we think it's the right solution engineering-wise. We will do public notice about to change before it goes out with signs and probably a press release in this case, because it is unusual to change like this.
So...
Not unusual, but uncommon that we do this one.
Is, is there a plan to put like a sign on the road? You know how they'll tell you, uh, road repairs starting on such and such a day from this time? That might be an idea.
Yes, we, we are planning that. I think we might have mentioned that in the letter, the memo to you all, but maybe not. And we are planning to let people know in advance, report the signage, and then even after it's in place, there'll be signs that say
Ahead of time.
Traffic control change ahead. I forget the exact wording, but we will do that to make sure people are informed in advance of, and once it's changed, they're ready to change it there.
And I will say, I'm blatantly using this as an opportunity to inform the public. I did speak about it on the radio yesterday. So just to be clear, am I correct when I say this is, if you're heading Malka, you would pass Kapaa Middle School, so people would expect it up there, and if you're coming down south, how would you describe it for people to know where it is?
Yeah, I think...
Just so people can hear, in case they...
Yeah, the big, the big change that people will experience, and again, we will do notification about this to the public, is that as they're coming, if they're coming from Mackay, they're on Olahaina Road from, say, Waialua Homesteads area towards the north end of Kapaa Town. Currently, they, they have this curve there, and you just turn onto the rest of Olahaina Road, and the change will be that you will, driving down that road, you'll experience a stop sign, and you'll have to make a right turn at that stop sign to continue on Olahaina Road. And the other significant change would be, well, two others, really. So if you're coming, coming down Kaapuni Road, where you currently have a stop sign, you don't have to crane your neck wherever you want to see the cars coming on Olahaina Road, you'll actually have a through movement there without a stop sign. And so there won't be any to, you know, to stop and look over your shoulder anymore. And then lastly, the, um, coming from, past the Kapaa Middle School as you're going Malka, Olahaina Road, if you want to continue on Olahaina Road, you'll have to yield to make the left turn to the Kaapuni Road traffic, which you do not have to do now. So that, those would be the three, three notable changes for people driving into that intersection.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying it, and if people are watching, please listen and pay attention. Yeah, it's a significant but important change.
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so thank you very much for doing this. As Councilmember Cowden said, I live on that street. Kaapuni is a nightmare. The engineering of the whole road needs help, but I appreciate you addressing that really dangerous intersection. Every day I drive out of it. I'm, like, I think about it sometimes, like, I hope I can get out of that intersection, because it is really dangerous, so I appreciate it. Is this a temporary fix, kind of, because we're kind of looking at a long-term possible roundabout at that location with another subdivision that's going in?
We consider this a permanent fix for the current situation. We, we've looked at possibly doing a roundabout there as part of the county project, and it's just not feasible with the, the topography and the geometry. Even a mini roundabout would be very difficult there. So, but, um, there have been development proposals for the adjacent property in the past, and, and there may be future development proposals for that property, and as part of those proposals, there, there have been discussions about putting a roundabout there as part of this, of that development. So, and if, if that development occurs in the way that it has been discussed, it's possible that a roundabout would be put there. So, in that sense, it could be considered temporary if, if, but it's kind of lifting, right?
Right.
That property has to go through significant approvals before it can be developed.
Okay, yeah, so eventually if that does happen, we'll look at an appropriate upgrade.
Yes, so, yeah, we would, we would, we would welcome installation of a roundabout there as an even better improvement to this one.
Okay.
Especially if that property develops, increasing the traffic in the area a little bit.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Is it possible, because I agree with you, I think for decades of people been asking for this, that, the people that live up there or use that road, but, you know, old habits are, are hard to change. So I'm concerned that the people coming on Olahaina, which is, is a lot of traffic that comes on Olahaina, they may not see the sign, and they're just gonna zoom, 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 and continue because they've been doing it for decades, and then you got the Kaapuni Road guy who used to have to stop, now will just go down. Is it, is it possible or feasible to, maybe for ninety days, or put some rumble strips or
Yellow lights?
Something as they approach the stop sign on, on Olahaina?
Um...
Just, just with, with a big sign saying stop ahead or something, because I'm, I'm afraid, especially at night, they, they're just gonna...
Yeah, that's a good, good, good question. We, I double check, I'll double check, but I believe we do have a stop ahead sign for that approach.
Yeah, but I, I'm, you know...
Yeah, the rumble, we can, we can look into that. I, um, I always say they do any sort of rumble strip near houses. Now, there aren't any houses right there.
Yeah, there's, there's not, nothing there.
So it's not too bad for that, because that, that noise of rumble carries...
And only very temporary, very temporary, just until the people get used to the stop sign.
We can, yeah, we can look into that.
Yeah, I think so.
I echo that, too, because I was just thinking about that, like, my dad's driven that every day for fifty, sixty years, and...
I know where the cops gonna be hanging out.
Yeah, I was just thinking that. It might be a hard adjustment for people that are not used to it.
Oh, it's gonna be.
And I will say the geometry change to the road will also help. I mean, you, you, you won't have that nice flat curve that you have making the right turn.
Oh, you guys are improving, changing the...
We add, we added some pavement, and we're gonna be doing the final pavement overlay before we do this work.
Oh, okay. So, so this is pretty accurate, then?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's the new geometry, roughly.
Oh, okay, because I was gonna say, this isn't to scale, because that's not what it looks like now.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna take some pavement out on that corner, and that'll, that'll help with, with discouraging them.
Right, okay.
It'll be hard to miss the change at that point.
That, yeah, that's quite important to change that geometry, too, yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other questions for, for the works? If not, thank you very much.
Testimony.
Ms. Komol?
I live in that area also.
Always have to state your name.
Oh, I'm Lana Komol. Um, I also live in that area. Um, I heard the concern about the changes. I have a really hard time adjusting when we changed the lanes at the bottom of Waialua over by Smith's. When we took that lane, I like, I almost got hit by a car there one time because I wasn't used to the change. Um, so even maybe just like the black with white signs, like they use for the sidewalks in Kapaa, those are like pretty good, and they'd be good at night, too. That might be helpful. Um, also, though, just a little bit of a concern about the school traffic there, because as the traffic in Kapaa gets worse, we take that road from Waialua Homesteads to go backroads if you need to head north in the morning, and there's already a pretty big slowdown over there with the, um, the middle school being right there and all the school traffic in the morning. And so just, I don't know, I'm not a road planner person, but like taking that into consideration, how that will affect it for people that are trying to get through there to give them more access to move faster in the morning that way without having every single car stop when there's already a slowdown there, and then also anybody that's taking that road not to go to the school that needs to head up back up into Kapahi that might be doing work up there or anything. Again, I don't know what the solution for that is, but the school traffic in the morning especially is pretty bad already there, and the traffic, the stop sign will make it worse.
Thank you. Mr. Cyclos?
For the record, Lana Cyclos. Yeah, I'd just like to thank the engineers from our county for both this item as well as the previous one having to do with the, uh...
Pump station?
Yeah, the construction at the sewage treatment facility. Engineers catch a lot of gas sometimes because they've inherited some big messes that they've got to clean up, and so both of these are very, very good for the public, and I just want to thank the engineers for doing a great job. And a lot of times, they catch gas, even from me, but today, thank you all very, very much. You are doing a great job for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Not? Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Canashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Raposo.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
The next item is resolution number two-zero-two-five-dash-two-five, resolution opposing the increase in shipping costs proposed by Young Brothers L.L.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. With that, let me turn it over to Ms. Holland, uh, if you wanted to give us an overview, and, and then, and then we can open it up for some public testimony.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I mean, I think it's relatively self-explanatory. I just kind of, and I appreciate, I want to thank the staff for moving so quickly on, on trying to get something on our agenda for this topic, given the significant raises that are proposed by Young Brothers and the amount of concern that we've seen in the community on the cost of living and the ability to survive here. I felt it was necessary that we, as a body, weighed in on this significant increase, and I'm, I'm hoping that we all agree that this very large increase to our shipping is, is something that's unsustainable for our communities and for small businesses, and, yeah, I mean, I, I did a bit of research over the last couple of days trying to catch up on, you know, obviously the claims from Young Brothers that this raise is required. Their, their parent company seems to have profited over five billion dollars last year. I, I struggle to realize the necessity for such a strong and sharp increase in shipping costs, given that kind of revenue and profit margin, and I'm just staunchly opposed to these significant increases. I think particularly at a time when there's so much uncertainty in the market, so much uncertainty about potential tariffs already drastically raising costs for us. We already are so dependent... We already are so dependent upon goods shipped in, and I'd love to see us be less dependent, but I don't want to see families struggling to really survive when there's just so many other weights and pressures restricting survival. So it's a pretty basic opposition to the increase, and yeah, I encourage the conversation. Thank you.
Are we in conversation?
Well, just over the, the content of the resolution, I will open it up for public...
Okay, because I, you, can I ask her a question on what she just clarified question? So you said the parent company, so which parent company are you speaking of?
Salt...
Saltchuk, Saltchuk?
Yeah.
Okay, Saltchuk is a national company based out of Oregon.
Out of Oregon.
It's a very large company.
Yeah, and this is a subsidiary.
It's a subsidiary between, Foss is in between the two of them. And then, just a question, you must have read their, their comments on here. So, when we think of the impact of raising tariffs, I meant tariffs, because I'm thinking about the tariffs on top of you, forgive me for that. When we think of the impact of raising rates on shipping, what is the impact on not allowing just a simple strong of opposition? What is the impact of that, do you see?
The impact of not allowing the increase?
The impact of not allowing the increase.
You know, they would have to source the difference that they need in other ways, either from their parent companies or from potentially like government support or something to, I mean, this is somewhat of a public utility. So I see it as just not being passed on to Kauai residents at this time.
And so, just ask me a few questions, because I appreciate your mana in being a brand-new councilperson too, so I appreciate that. Did you see during COVID, it was put before for the, the state to give 25 million of CARES Act funds, which I was super in support of? Did you follow that?
A little bit, yeah.
So, and so you followed that that was denied?
Mm-hmm.
And then, like, there's been, I think that would have been a good solution. So you see that, I'm trying to see what, how many years they said? Was it 10 years that they have? It doesn't seem like it's been 10 years, five years? Is that correct?
That is five.
Yeah, and it says in...
Yeah, five years.
Oh, no, five years right there. Trying to see how many years. I thought they said 10, but last rate increase was 2020, so it's five years ago. So...
And that was a significant increase as well?
It was a significant increase, and I remember, I was like, ah! So, inflation in those five years, what have you seen the inflationary pressure having been?
Yeah, I feel like prices have gone up significantly. I mean, I think it went up during COVID around the time where we gave them that increase pretty significantly, and obviously it's, it's continued to be high costs. But we are seeing a dip in gas prices as well, so I don't, I don't know. I haven't, you know, fully analyzed their books or tried to analyze the detail of it. I just, it seems pretty clear to me that they have, they're a subsidiary of bigger companies that could afford to help support them getting out of whatever hole they've dug themselves into, and that that shouldn't fall back on us so soon after five years is not a long time, to adjust to the inflationary costs that might be actually linked to that other increase that they gave us five years ago as well.
Okay, and then, I guess I will keep asking you questions, I'll save it for discussion?
Chair, with that, anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Okay, I'll suspend the rules.
Aloha, my name is Lana Bilbo. I was born and raised on the east side in Kapaa. I'm opposed to the rate increase. So the increase they're talking about four years ago was a 46% rate increase, which had really material impacts on people, you know? Just, like, a really practical one is people buy their cars from off-island a lot of the time, right? Our car market's really brutal, like, it's now, it's almost too expensive to ship cars in now. Like, that calculus has changed for a lot of families where we can't afford to do that, or it's become a lot less reasonable for us. I think that they're also proposing, I think, like, an interim, like, five, or after this they would go to a 5% increase, but inflation's only like 2.4%, and so that seems unreasonable. This would have a disproportionate outer island impact, so obviously you guys know Kauai County would be disproportionately impacted by this, and that does not sit right with me, especially when we're living in a cost of living crisis where Kapahi has the highest housing and grocery bills in the nation. Some other examples of ways that this would impact from businesses that I personally worked in, so I used to work for a local food nonprofit, I've actually worked for two separate, so when I worked for Malama Kauai, we were looking at shipping vehicles and supplies over from other islands. Again, when small nonprofits are trying to make their limited funding stretch, these rate increases will have a really big impact. And so being able to, again, ship vehicles, like, we needed to buy refrigerated vans so that we can redistribute fresh local produce to support our local food economy. You know, that thousand, $2,000 change is a really big impact on small nonprofits like that. Same thing, I've worked before, I'm not resenting any of these nonprofits, just speaking from my experience. I've worked for Inaho Okupo Kilauea. We ship kalo from Kauai over to Oahu. Oahu has, is not able to produce the amount of food that they need to produce, especially with coconut ryanoceros beetle decimating their agricultural production. And so, not only is it important for residents on Kauai, it's important for residents on Oahu to be able to receive food from the outer islands at a rate that is reasonable. And the shipping increases will have an impact on that as well. I have an uncle, they have a two-income household, both of them are teachers. One of them is a teacher at KCC, the other one is a special needs teacher over at the elementary school. And the way they make their finances work is that they have a side hustle shipping tires in from the mainland and then selling them, basically, to like the people who like Yoda's, there's like a special fancy tire they like. But that's going to impact their small business that these dual-income teacher household is trying to use to make their finances work on Kauai. And so, it's not just the dramatic increase in the cost of goods, it's the impact on all these other nonprofits, businesses, families that are trying to work a second or third job to make ends meet, like we just heard from all the market people. I think that there are alternative solutions, whether, you know, the public doesn't need to bail out companies when they're not making their finances work. We can also look at things, I know I'm out of time, just like two more things. Co-ops, aggregation, I talked to the Young Brothers people, you know, they're saying we need to ship things in bigger bulk, so looking at ways like that.
I got, I got, yeah, that's your time. You, you almost done?
Yeah, I'm almost done. Just want to, like, acknowledge that we just bailed them out four years ago. Bailing them out again when they haven't improved their business model doesn't make sense and puts us into a worse place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sykes?
For the record, Lana Sykes, earlier in my life, I worked in the merchant marine. I helped move in port tens of thousands, if not 100,000 or more containers in Honolulu and in Houston, Texas. The PUC sets the rates in Hawaii, and so that is a great comfort to me, the consumer. However, the PUC is only as effective as all of the information that they have, and they do not have access to all the information there is. So my concern about this is whether or not this is a move by Foss and Saltech to improve their corporate finances at our expense. And so when I was working for Hawaiian Tug and Barge in, when would this have been? Early 1990s, I believe, Hawaiian Electric sold Hawaiian Tug and Barge and Young Brothers to Foss. And so prior to that, Hawaiian Tug and Barge had built several new tugboats, and understanding our tugboats are designed for the open ocean, even though lengthwise they're fairly small. And after Foss took over, one of our tugboats disappeared, and we got a Foss tugboat, which was appropriate, but not nearly as good because it was a coast-wise tugboat, and it was a pig to ride on. All tugboats are pigs to ride on, but it was the worst, one of the worst riding vessels I've ever been on. No one wanted a crew on the vessel. And so what they did was they got a brand-new tugboat from us and gave us a 10-year-old, smaller, less valuable tugboat. Why all that occurred, I have no idea. I have no corporate insight. I only know what I witnessed appear at the pier. But one of the things that the state is at risk of is this manipulation of assets so that we get charged more, we get worse service, but it appears nothing's changed. And so PUC doesn't have insight into the boardrooms of Foss and Saltech. On the other hand, the price of everything goes up, and to tell the public, when I worked for Hawaiian Tug and Barge, I got paid as a chief mate. I worked 48 hours of straight time, and the rest of it was overtime, and it was, well, after Hurricane Aniki, it was not uncommon that I made 90-plus hours of overtime in a two-week period. And so it is a brutal job for the people that do it.
Can you wrap it up, or is there anyone else wishing to testify?
Yeah.
Okay. Lana, is there somebody else? Just come back in a minute.
Hello, and so, as you know, Erin, yes, as you know, I invited the entire room from the last meeting here, and I'm shocked to see that nobody is here. They're all upset about their finances, how they can't survive without the farmers market, and yet we were just inviting them, or I was, to come to this meeting about it. So 35% proposed increase, I've heard 27% in some articles, 46% in 2025. Add that up, that's 73 to 81% increase in five years. I'm so shocked that everyone here is so, almost appearing to me, well, I don't know your stance, honestly.
You'll hear it soon.
I hope so. And I'm not sure how the chain of command works as far as the PUC and you guys and whose call it is, but I did the research too. $5 billion in revenue by the Saltchuk company that is the parent company to the subsidiary of, what is it, Foss. Then they're saying that, oh, nobody else wants this contract, nobody else wants to work in Hawaii. I doubt that. We have a Chinese company, we have one from Holland, we have one from Canada, all operating LA to Canada, the whole Pacific rim. So that's not true either. I really feel that all of you need to bring public awareness to this, because this isn't acceptable. I don't think anyone knows what's going on, because everybody's so busy working to survive here, and it's a sad, sad situation. You guys make 75 a grand a year, probably make, have another job, you're probably getting increases because that's what happens, you know? Inflation, you all get raises. If you're making over 100 grand, you might be okay. The rest of these people, teachers, working for $40,000 and $50,000, these are wages from the 80s. It's a sad state. Hawaii's going down the tubes. You have no working class, it's a trickle-down effect. I, I can't even, I'm shocked this is happening. I've been here for 27 years, it's always hard, but never this hard. And the sad thing is, the Hawaiians are leaving. There's no Hawaiians left in Hawaii. They're moving to Vegas. They're moving to the mainland because it's unaffordable, it's unstain, it's unsustainable, and it's sad. People come, the tourism, you're all crying about, oh, you want to do tourism. Where are the Hawaiians? Where's the Kanakas that create Hawaii and give the culture what it is? Why people come here? It's not to go to the farmers market and buy trinkets. I'm sorry. They come here to see Hawaiians and their culture, and it's falling apart before your eyes. So please speak up and, and do whatever it takes to stop this increase, please. That's why you're all elected to do that, for the people of Kauai. That is your job.
Thank you.
And I don't, I hope they aren't giving anybody kickbacks or that or any of that, but we chin up about it though, and it does happen. So how can I say?
Aren't you gonna say to listen to our comments?
Yeah, you should say.
No, I've, I've been here all morning. Sorry.
Goodness and life.
Mr. Hart?
Bye.
I just, Bruce Hart, for the record, I just want to know, I mean, I want to hear the numbers. I want to know how much they're making. I want to know how much their bottom line is. I want to know if they're gouging us or not. If they're gouging us, let's gouge them back. If they're not gouging us, then we need to look at realistic ways to reduce the cost. And then we need to use every bit of power we have in order to implement those changes. Okay? So maybe we ought to do both. You know, we'll take a look at them, and I mean a close look. I mean, I don't know, can we order an audit? But anyhow, it just doesn't sound right. They're asking for a lot of money.
Anyone else wishing to testify first time? If not, Mr. Sykes?
For the record, Lana Sykes, I'd like to address the comment a woman just made that there's lots of foreign carriers to carry cargo from Los Angeles to Vancouver, Canada. There are. It's an absolute statement fact. There's also lots of foreign carriers hauling freight from Asia to the West Coast. We are fortunate in being protected by the Jones Act, which regulates shipping between American ports. And so there is no line of people waiting to take over from Young Brothers. There is no one that wants Young Brothers' business because it doesn't spend enough profit. The reason shipping is so expensive and the reason no other entity in the United States wants to come here is 100% of the containers that come to Hawaii are filled with cargo, and some 97 or 98% of the containers that leave Hawaii are empty. And so if you want to bring a container to Kauai, you have to pay to send it back to the West Coast. And so that is why shipping is so expensive. And so if you want to cut the cost of shipping, the state of Hawaii and the county of Kauai have to reduce your, our dependency on tourism, which only fills airplane seats, not cargo containers, and we need to fill the containers with something of commercial value to subsidize shipping the container back to the West Coast. And so, olden days was, to some degree, farm products, but the great bulk of it had no impact on containers because sugar didn't go in containers, molasses didn't go in containers. Pineapple did, but it was canned. And so when we lost canned pineapple, that was one of our major container exports. And so basically, Mattson Ship leaves Hawaii empty. And so you gotta pay the entire cost of the ship transiting to the West Coast, earning no money. And so that's why our shipping's so expensive. So we need to diversify our economy. I don't know whether or not the Public Utilities Commission has gotten it right with all of the numbers to figure out what the rate increase is, but that would, that just requires somebody smarter than me crunching numbers, right? But I assume that PUC has tremendous oversight, it always has, and so I suspect that these numbers are accurate from one perspective.
Okay, thank you.
I have a clarifying question. Do you support the resolution, or do you oppose it? Or dare you indifferent and just sharing comments?
Well, I'm, I'm sharing comments because I obviously don't want to pay more in cost living.
Okay, that, that, yeah, we're not going to get into a discussion. Thank you. Anyone else?
Lana Bilbo, again, there's a couple points that this gentleman reminded me of and one that I forgot. So first, the five years ago rate increase, the 46% that we just faced five years ago, that was supposed to be a temporary increase that was turned into a permanent, and I think And I think that's a really pertinent and important point to make note of. The other thing, I talked to the Young Brothers guys pretty extensively after the meeting we had in this building over here. And they say that there's competitors shipping from the mainland to Hawaii. And there's not supposed to be, but still are competitors shipping inter-island. But that they're facing a lot of pushback from like air freight because the people really want to get things really immediately, right? Like we're all in this like Amazon, gotta have it now, fastest is the best kind of mentality. And so I again, just really want to push like on the idea of if their business model is sustainable and like whether we should continue to bail them out after these huge rate increases we just faced five years ago. Or if they need to do, I know they've been doing this like debt audit kind of thing that they had to do after the last large rate increase. But like whether that needs to be a much more substantial shift in their business model. Because it doesn't make sense to keep bailing them out at the expense of Kauai. And I also appreciate the gentleman's comments about, you know, meeting have more products flowing both directions, particularly inter-island and particularly agriculture. So thank you.
Thank you. Is that a call meeting back to order?
Who should like testify?
Any, huh? Any further discussion?
Do you want to testify?
You want to testify, sorry?
Hello, there's one chair in here. All right, call the meeting back to order. Further discussion? Is no more discussion?
I have discussion.
Okay, let's go.
Doesn't have discussion. I will say that my background is private sector. And so shipping isn't truly public. But because this is a monopoly, it is effectively public. I want to just make a few corrections. Five years ago, they weren't bailed out. Bailing out means they're given money, like giving them twenty-five million. If the state had done that, that's a bailout. So if the Public Utilities Commission allows them to bail themselves out, it allows them to raise their own rates. And so there's something called market forces. And after the last increase, because I talked to a lot of small businesses that are clearly impacted by this. And they said, well, after the last market increase, we kind of had to stop using them. So they already lost a lot of their, the market caused it to be a problem. There are consolidators in California or different places that consolidate in different ways. And then they ship on Mattsons, which is continental United States to Hawaii. And Young Brothers is dwindling away their market. They are in default, was the word that they were using. They are in debt default. And so when they have this debt default, that is because they've lost their market in so many different ways. So hopefully, they are good enough business people. I think what they do when they say, hey, we can have up to twenty-five percent increase or whatever that amount is, that gives their creditors a little bit more energy to not take action on them now. But what I heard them to say, and then I have done more research, they are at least claiming that that's the position that they're in. They're about to be squashed. And so I understand that with market forces. When you look at how the county does with salaries, the Salary Commission has recommended, and then the collective bargaining agreement has gone five percent per year because inflation has been so radical. The cost of houses has gone up like triple. A lot of things have tripled, not just doubled since before COVID. And so with the cost of shipping, Mr. Sykes said the right thing, is they are leaving with empty containers. So these guys are just running on fumes. And I mentioned earlier about the Board of Water Supply meeting yesterday. I thought it was great. We've got one of the board members here, just looking at when expenses are more than revenues over time. Salt Chuck, which certainly would have the money, and you're correct, Salt Chuck would have the money to bail them out. The question is, in the private sector, why bail out all your bad things? Because they aren't public. So a lot of businesses, the way that they thrive is they just cut off the, the elements that aren't functioning well. And so you just get rid of the business that doesn't work for you. And so to ask the rest of their ratepayers everywhere else to basically subsidize a dwindling and dying market over here, I get why they might not choose to do that. They aren't the government and they don't have to do it. They might have some motivation to do it, but they don't. So when we were looking, I'm just going to bring it back to water and not spill all those beans. But if those costs go up, it's really staggering. But what is the cost of not being able to do business? And so when I look at the impacts, we've got so many costs that are going up, from these potential tariffs to the collapse in the market, which basically funds what we bring in on tourism and all these people buying all this land or whatever else. We're, we're likely to see a downgrade. You add on top of it shipping. Is that completely painful? Absolutely. These companies like Young Brothers, if they just radically raise their rates, they're going to put themselves under anyway because people aren't going to ship their cars that way. They'll ship, buy it and ship it on Mattsons or whatever way they might do it. And so the cost to me of having this unequivocally strong opposition, if this had been, hey, you know, we asked for this kind of smaller amount for it to increase and this, this number increase, really they're hoping to go five percent per year afterwards. The cost of it is to lose our inter-island shippers. So that's your canoe that can't go to the, the state races. That's all kinds of things that people can't do to bring over when they move to Maui. You know, there's so many areas. I imagine Mattsons at some level would pick up a little bit of that business. But right now, Young Brothers comes twice a week, brings a lot of our groceries, brings a lot of things that are really important. So I am not going to be supporting this, even though I am horrified, horrified at the thought of this kind of increase. I'm just more horrified at the thought of losing Young Brothers. And some of my childhood has been in towns that lost their main industry and been around places that have lost their main industry. When that happens, you go from vibrant to, to absolutely dry. And already, we have so much economic stratification. I think it will be powerfully impacting for small businesses, especially those that deal with the inter-island market. We will almost end it because we will have to be shipping the stuff on the planes. And anything of high volume, they're already doing a lot of shipping on the planes. So the market, I think, will fix it if they get their, their PUC permission. And either way, we might lose them, but we will lose them faster, I believe, without allowing the PUC to do the job function that they are chartered to do. This, when we do a resolution, because we have a learner in here, when we do a resolution, we're just saying, this is what's important to us. This is just our opinion. We have no authority, just influence. Resolutions are important. I applaud you for putting a resolution out because it's an important discussion. Wouldn't it happen? I wouldn't have even noticed, probably. So, yeah, I'll be voting against this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh.
Should we pull, keep the time?
I expected more people to testify. But anyway, I'm concerned. I'm concerned because, I mean, we heard from a few people in the earlier discussion today from the public about the cost of doing business in Hawaii is astronomical. We talked, talked about how much it costs to buy a house over here. It's, it's, everything we do here, eighty, eighty-five percent is shipped in on a boat. Salt Chuck also owns Aloha Air Cargo, by the way. They own that too. But Young Brothers is an independent subsidiary, so I'm told that they are, it's a separate business under an umbrella. So they don't, I guess they don't help each other or what. It's, it's just a separate business. But for us, I, I don't know how we would withstand a, a rate increase in shipping. I mean, the rubber band is so stretched thin, it's about ready to snap. It's snappy. We see all our people leaving, moving away. I just came back from Texas. Brand-new house, brand-new. Seventeen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two bath, beautiful home. Perry Homes, a contractor, beautiful custom house. Two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand months. And, and ours, that house is about one-point-two over here somewhere, more on the North Shore. Forty-six percent, it's fine for me because I am a business guy. I want to support local business. I want to help the local business. But you cannot, I mean, Young Brothers chose to invest a hundred-twenty million dollars for buying a boat or fix the, whatever, knowing that they never had the cash flow to do so. They, they went out and, went and spent the money they never had. And now they're coming back and say, hey, people, you guys will pay for it now. I have a problem with that. And trust me, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose some friends because of this. I've got a lot of friends who work for Young Brothers. But when you look at a forty-six percent increase five years ago, you said it best, the business model. Can we sustain the business model? No! So you got to change the model. You got to change the model. It, it's not just a general increase. The general increase, I don't know, I don't know what it is, I shouldn't, minimum bill of lading. The, the range is from forty-one and a half to seventy-six point six percent. Well, I don't know what that is. Maybe Lonnie can help me on the break. But they're also asking for a temporary rate increase that they wanted it in April of twenty percent. Now, they want them now. Not before the PUC does their findings. They want, they want the authority to do that now. And then there's this water carrier inflation, inflationary cost index, which is an additional maximum of five percent per year. And that's a lot of increases. And, you know, we're talking about the cost of a car, you know, it's a ship, that's a couple hundred bucks more. You buy a fifty-thousand-dollar car, two-hundred dollars is put into the loan, you don't feel them. But I'm not talking about the car. I'm talking about the food. I'm talking about the groceries, the stuff that we have to have. That's what I'm talking about. Not the luxuries of life. Buy one used car, you don't worry about shipping. That's what I worry about. I worry about the cost of living, that we all talk about. We have no control. And we don't. In most cases, we don't. The market controls. So twenty percent immediately, they want that in April. They want a, this general rate increase of, you know, thirty-five percent, forty percent, thirty percent. And then this, the WICI, the Water Inflationary Cost Index, that's there to help them. In fact, I think the state, isn't the state passing a bill that's going to mandate that or make it a law? That they will automatically get that increase? They don't have to go to the PUC? So they're going to get that. I'm sure they're going to get it. The problem is, what if the cost index is reflective of commodities that are not water-related? There's no impact to the shipping industry. You can get an ability to raise your rates because something else went up. That's not fair. It's not right. But they're going to get it. So I feel for Young Brothers. I think we need Young Brothers. But if forty-six percent five years ago, and even on a conservative side of the thirty percent, which is pretty much one of the lower increases, and that's for automobiles, you get a discount if you bulk ship them. So the dealers even get a ten percent discount. But forty-six plus thirty, seventy-six percent in, in a short five-year period, with the expectation that it will go up annually every year. How can we sustain that? I mean, who's going, we're competing with the price of eggs now. We're competing with the price of milk and, it's unfortunate. We are not the continent of the United States. We cannot truck our groceries. We got to ship them all in. And people already stretched thin. You heard a lot of people today, right? Their, their words of bankruptcy because they, they, their income was stopped because their marketplace was shut down. Who would add to that? Who would add to that burden? So I'm, I'm going to support it. And the reason I want to, a resolution is a policy statement. So my statement is, hey, PUC, make sure you look at this properly. Make sure you give it the, the, it, the research and the investigation that it deserves. Dive deep into these people's books. They did say they lost eighteen million, or they are on track to lose eighteen million this year. They're asking for an increase of twenty-six, more than twenty-six million, but they project a loss of eighteen million. So you cannot expect us to pay for their salary increases. I don't have a problem paying for their gas and their docking fees and their patch and painting boats, but it, it's, it's, this is, I, I mean, I hate to say, but it's like gouging. Can you imagine if our water department, when I was, you know what, damn, we owe five billion dollars in the next year. So we're going, we, we need an eight-billion-dollar increase in our rates so we can cover the cost that it takes to deliver water. It, it's not going to happen. And this is the same scenario. Whether or not the state going to have to step in and help subsidize because of the necessity of having this water carrier between islands. But, but this here, I, I'm supporting it. And thank you for, for listening, guys. My time is up. All right. Anyone had a chance? Keep quiet. If you have anything? Okay. Motion is to approve. Roca.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaleo. Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Konishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one no.
Next item?
Next item is Bill for Second Reading, Bill Number 2945, a bill for an ordinance amending Kauai County General Plan 2018 relating to a parcel located in Elee Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of public testimony? Seeing none. Roca.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Konishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
Bill Number 2946, a bill for an ordinance amending the state land use district boundary relating to a parcel located in Elee Kauai.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion of public testimony? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please. I'm sorry, Roca.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Konishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Hi. Sorry, I was thinking about the Wheaties, the price of Wheaties that was going to go up next. Okay, next item, please.
Bill Number 2947, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter Eight, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended, relating to zoning boundaries in Elee Kauai.
Move to approve. Moved by Kuli'i, seconded by Cavaleo. Not at any particular order, but that, that's. Any discussion of public testimony? Seeing none. Roca.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Konishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, please.
The last bill on page six is Bill Number 2948, a bill for an ordinance amending the West Kauai Community Plan 2020 relating to a parcel located in Elee Kauai.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion of public testimony? Seeing none. All in. Now, Roca.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Konishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Posel.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Can you read us into executive session, please?
This is ES 1144 pursuant to Kauai Vice Statute Sections 92-4 and 92-5A4 and Kauai County Charter Section 3.07E. On behalf of the council, the office of the county attorney requests an executive session with the council to provide the council with a briefing, discussion, and consultation regarding the quarterly report on pending and denied claims. This briefing and consultation involves a consideration of the powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and reliabilities of the council and the county as they relate to this agenda item.
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
Roca.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Councilmember Cavaleo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Conishiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Pozzo.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Before we recess, I just want to wish all of our staff members here a happy Administrative Professionals Day.
Yay!
I think I speak for all of us members, but thank you all. I will recess, let's take ten minutes and then we'll reconvene in executive session. Ten minutes. Ten minutes.
That's the top one for me because we haven't been talking to you in so long. I can't even talk. They're trying to just see if you're ready because it's like...
Because these are... They don't change the volunteers. They come out, they show up, and it's just... Yeah. 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 I got it. Yeah. 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 Yeah.